Supervisor McGordy.
Here.
Supervisor Mulhern.
Here.
Supervisor Hashak.
Here.
Chair Jertie.
Here.
And Supervisor Williams.
Here. Okay, Supervisor Mulhern, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the Madison County Board of Supervisors is in session. The next thing on our agenda is public comments on non-agenda items and items on the consent calendar. Do we have any members of the public who would like to address the board?
Yes, we do, and first on the line is going to be a voicemail by Matt Kaiser.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Matt Kaiser. I am speaking to you this morning on Public Expression 3A at the 511 meeting. Like I said, my name is Matt Kaiser. I'm the building official for the city of Ukiah and a resident in Redwood Valley. However, this morning I come to you as a volunteer firefighter for the Redwood Valley Cal Poly Fire Department. I did want to bring a few things up, provide some clarity. We are asking for these funds from PG&E for some new equipment or apparatus. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about our existing equipment and apparatus. First, we'll talk about our Type 1 structure engine. This is our first out engine when we get an emergency call. This engine has twice in the last six months without any warning shut down. The last I was actually on the engine or responding to a call, the engine shut down. We were forced to move over to the side of the road. This particular call turned out to be a false alarm, which was good. However, if it had been a real emergency that we had to get to, we would either have been delayed or not able to make it at all. Like I said, it's happened twice in this engine in the last six months. Our second out structure engine, I was on a call just a few weeks ago, and the transmission actually got stuck in a gear in which we're unable to really move forward. This again delayed our response. Now, in both these cases, we were able to shut off the engine, restart it, and were able to make it to our call. However, this is not the kind of delay that we want to see in these engines. We want to be able to get in these engines and know that they're going to run properly and get us to where we need to do, where we need to go, so we can help our community move past whatever issue we're responding to. We talked about our Type 3 engine, which we're also requesting funds for. The existing one we have is a two-wheel-drive engine, which does fine in the valley floor. But as we go up and respond to these wildfires up in the hills and areas that are steep terrain, there's not pavement, a four-wheel drive is almost mandatory. It would enable us to be able to respond to these issues faster, safer, and more effectively. A second thing I would like to bring to the board's attention, not necessarily having to do directly with the firehouse, but it's some kind of a grant program for low-income or older folks that are either unable physically or monetarily to do brush removal on their properties, to take care of those properties. Whether it's brush removal, tree trimming, things of this nature, there are a lot of folks in Redwood Valley that are either not able to do these things or can't afford to have them done. I'd like to see some kind of a grant program moving forward where these folks can apply for those funds in order to have contractors come in and clear their areas. It would also keep that money local here in Mendocino County. These are just a few things. I'd like to take this time to thank you for your time as Board of Supervisors, and please feel free to reach out to me at any time. Thanks so much. Have a great morning.
Next on the line will be Darcy Antle, followed by Eisenlokal Telly and David Sowles.
Good morning, members of the board. Darcy Antle, member of the public, longtime resident of Redwood Valley, and 2017 fire evacuee. I learned of the issues that Matt Kaiser just presented on the town hall meeting sponsored by Supervisor McGordy and Mulhern last week. As a resident, I wanted to ensure this board had that information. So I appreciate Mr. Kaiser calling in, and I appreciate this board taking the time to consider the seriousness and the need of those fire trucks in Redwood Valley. Thank you.
Next on the line is Eisenlokal Telly.
Good morning. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Morning, Chair Jertie, Supervisors, CEO Angelo, Eisenlokal Telly, Chief Probation Officer. I'm here to give you a quick update or report on AB 1869. This was passed by the legislation signed by the governor last year. It became law January 1st, but it becomes operable July 1st. This bill eliminates many fees that the court used to order. It has a large impact on probation and much smaller impacts on the sheriff's office and the public defender. We did a five-year comparative analysis of the impact this bill has on probation revenues. The five-year average that will be lost in revenues to probation alone is roughly $325,000, which will equate to about 8% of all department revenues and about 26% of what our net county costs were during that same timeframe. The impacts to the public defender's office, based on looking at their budget books, I was able to put it at roughly $20,000 to $25,000 per year. And the sheriff's department is a much lower impact than both of those. And I think theirs has to do with ankle monitors and one that can charge the general public that cannot afford or that could afford previously ankle monitor. CCP currently covers costs of those who couldn't afford it. The county itself, actually the fiscal impact, again, there's $65 million annually coming from the state to the counties. That's going to start in fiscal year '21, '22, and it'll run the next five fiscal years unless the legislation extends those provisions. The funds are to be appropriated into the controller for allocation to the counties according to a schedule provided by the Department of Finance. The specific county allocation has yet to be determined. We're hoping that it's finalized during the budget, the May revise in the budget process for the current year. The county would then need to come up with a methodology to expend those funds. I'd suggest using a proportional percentage-based formula for the lost revenues for simplicity and transparency reasons. And we're able to calculate that data again based on line item revenues, and then the board could easily apportion those funds out from the backfill. It's unfortunate, we still don't know exactly what Mendocino County will receive from the state. We did put a placeholder in our budget this current year for what those lost revenues will be. We just don't know what it will be, so probation potentially could need more or less depending on the actual revenues that come in. I'll yield the rest of my time with those comments. Thank you.
That concludes public expression.
Okay, thank you. So next we have the consent calendar. And first, I want to look to the clerk. The board was proper notice established for the consent calendar?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Do we have any items on the consent calendar that members would like to discuss or poll for a separate vote? Supervisor Mulhern?
Thank you. I just had, I had a question about the opportunity to change the amount of tax that existing cultivators in the Phase 1 ordinance have to pay. Is this an opportunity to do that, or is that something that needs to be brought forward at another time? For instance, if they are going to, if they're not going to keep their license or they're not cultivating for this year, is there anybody that can answer that?
Sure, looking either to the CEO's office or to the planning and building department for that question. And if they're not available right at the moment, maybe we'll hold off on that item.
Chair Jertie, this is CEO Angelo. I'm not, I don't have the answer to that, but we could look into that and get back to you either after the break or after lunch, if that's okay.
Okay, why don't we just, can you remind us which item are you referring to Supervisor Mulhern? And we could maybe hold off on that item and approve the rest of the consent calendar?
4A.
Okay, so 4A. Are there any other items on the consent calendar members would like to discuss? Okay, would someone like to make a motion for the balance of the consent calendar?
Excuse me, Chair Jertie, we do have public comment on the consent calendar, and I just want to point out that 4A is the only item on the consent calendar.
Okay, so let's have public comment.
First on the line will be Michael Katz, followed by Ron Edwards and Monique Ramirez.
Good morning, Supervisors. This is Michael Katz, Executive Director of Mendocino Cannabis Alliance. Thank you for discussing these topics today. Chapter 6.32 Cannabis Business Tax outlines the county's tax procedures as they relate to local licensed cannabis businesses. For existing operators, there is currently a minimum tax based on the size of their cultivation site, which is imposed regardless of business revenue. As you all know, farming is subject to the whim of the environment. With the ever-changing environmental conditions in Mendocino, we would like to take this opportunity to request once again that the minimum tax on cannabis cultivation permits be removed or replaced exclusively with the grocery receipts tax. The fact that estimated grocery receipts are being discussed for those outside of the program, determined in a potentially complicated and intensive estimating process, but not simply being applied to those within the program, points to continued unnecessary burden on Phase 1 and Phase 2 operators. As we've just entered a state of emergency due to the historic drought within our community, it is very likely that many operators may choose to reduce the size of their canopy this season and in the future as they adjust to available resources. Given this reality, those who voluntarily choose to reduce their canopy size should be able to receive a reduction in their tax burden as well. Local businesses should be rewarded for taking actions that consider the well-being of the entire community and not penalized financially if they are not utilizing their full allowable canopy in service of that greater well-being. Due to federal tax law, compliant cannabis businesses are not allowed to write off basic business expenses that enable traditional businesses to retain more of their earnings. As such, every additional tax at the local level increases the burden to a business substantially. At this time, Phase 1 and 2 operators in the program who hold non-cultivation licenses are still required to pay quarterly portions of their annual cannabis business taxes, even if the licenses are still in process. The required payment for a tax on a non-operational license is excessively burdensome, and we request that this policy be changed so that non-operational licenseses are not being asked to pay a tax on activities they are not undertaking. Additionally, the cost to appeal the minimum tax should come at no cost or at a minimum aligned with those costs of other appeal fee schedules. For the quarterly county cultivation tax fees, we again suggest basing them on receipts, not a minimum based on a permit size. Further, we recommend that a streamlined system be implemented, which enables cultivators to update temporary canopy reductions, which would automatically make corresponding adjustments to their required county cultivation tax without having to add workload to the county staff. This system would then also be utilized to the cultivator return to their fully permitted canopy. We encourage you to take this opportunity to consider these items and to incorporate the appropriate changes into county policy. Thank you so much for your time.
Next on the line will be Ron Edwards.
Good morning, Board. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I am very happy that Supervisor Mulhern has brought up the appeal fee. The of keeping the permit, however, I have called in the county to draw my permit and told that I would need to pay a $450 appeal fee since, and even though the property has not been used for cultivation for over a year. This is just, there's no other business than when you close your doors, you have to pay a fee to get rid of your tax. You just say you're ceasing operations and things end at that point, so I hope that we can do this. I also want to support the MCA statement that Michael Katz made about people reducing their crops. We've heard from several presentations about the drought this year and how crops will be able to barely survive, but maybe not even make a profit at all. And if we really want to look at this, it's interesting because at times we said we want cannabis to be like everything else, and then at other times we want to separate it and punish it differently. So we should be able to have a mechanism that if you do reduce your crop, when you do your inspection, it's very easy. Say August, September, October, it's a reduction that's coming to account. That's being a good citizen who can conserve water. So I don't know why we're overlooking that as well as continuing to overlook a lot of the issues that affect cannabis and getting the Phase 1 operators through. So if we can get these fees, get the program working as opposed to just going after it with a big stick. Because I honestly believe in looking at the code enforcement reports that the people who even step forward, the 1,100, are not the problem. I really want the board to focus on the 8,000 to 9,000 other illegal operators that are out there that really are the problem. I think that you might find that, yes, this all sounds great, what you're doing is crackdown, but I guarantee you, and I've been an observation of this for a long time, this is not going to solve the complaints of the 8,000 to 9,000. Thank you.
Next on the line will be Monique Ramirez.
Hello, Monique Ramirez, District 3. I'm curious if I can go after the next speaker. I'm having some childcare issues.
You are the final speaker.
Okay, I'm sorry. Monique Ramirez, District 3. I just want to say that the enforcement issues are really tricky to navigate. I really feel that the presentation that is being brought forward, you know, it's going to be good in some ways, but I also feel like, you know, if satellite imagery is going to be utilized as a tool to help with identifying sites, but yet the priority is the violent actors, like how, how is that going to be determined? I mean, if you use satellite imagery to look at a site, you don't really know that it's violent or not. And so I'm really curious how the sheriff's department and others are planning to really tackle that. It almost seems that it sometimes does go hand in hand with egregious activity that's environmental violations, but that is a concern. And I have to say, like in Covelo specifically, I know many people that are dealing with neighbors that are very violent already, and they have reached out to code enforcement, they have taken steps to reach out to law enforcement and have not seen any relief. And some of the feedback that I get is that they're saying that even law enforcement says that they're so dangerous and that nothing happens. And I can speak to that specifically because I just drove home last night from being out of the valley. And, you know, there's a bunch of illegal operations up on some of these mountain roads, and you can see all of the lit-up greenhouses that are totally illegal. And I know that a lot of people have called these things in, and they're operating right now. People are setting up shop and getting ready to bulldoze hillsides as we speak. And I just don't understand how our county is planning to actually tackle that. And, you know, I think it's going to take a lot more than just our county coming together on it. I also feel that the cannabis program housing the satellite imagery software, you know, I think that it's going to be, I feel like it needs its own management team in itself. And I think housing it with code enforcement probably would be the most appropriate thing at this time, given that the cannabis program has so many other really important things that they have to tackle with, you know, a whole new Phase 3 and continuing to work through Appendix G applications, opening up a portal for new submissions under the embossed receipt holder platform stuff. And so there's just like a lot there, but I do appreciate that this conversation is happening, and I just hope that we really can help get people.
That concludes public comment on the consent calendar.
Excuse me, Chair Jertie, this is Charlotte Scott, Assistant County Council. We have Matt Kudrowski available. I believe we could answer the question from his supervisor Mulhern.
Okay, great.
Deputy County Counsel Matt Kudrowski, I believe the question was whether or not this item was an appropriate time to bring up further discussion of the minimum taxes that are in the cannabis tax ordinance. And I think the way this was agendized, this is far more targeted at specifically looking at illegal cultivation and applying the tax rate on those operations. I think if the board wanted to give direction to staff to come back in the future regarding a discussion, broader discussion on the tax and our ability to amend it, we could take that direction from the board and return at a later point in time. Does that answer the supervisor's question?
Yes, thank you. I just know that it has been brought up several times, especially around cultivators that are in Phase 1 that may be deactivating their license. And I think it's an important conversation for the board to have. I also understand that there are some challenges with this particular tax because it was a voter initiative, and the ability to change that is somewhat limited. I would, I would look to the supervisors that have been here for the last two years and see if there's any support, excuse me, to bring that conversation back.
Supervisor Hashak.
Thank you, Chair Jertie. I think that with this drought, that these people who are in the permit system are bringing forth some important issues, and I think that we need to look at that. And so I would be willing to bring it back, and also the appeal process.
Okay, we have another supervisor who wishes to have that conversation. Supervisor McGordy?
Yeah, I would support a conversation. I mean, again, if people are having to change their practices and reduce their crop because they don't have water, it's, I'm very sympathetic because there's many other farmers in the community facing the same thing. The question will be, how do you verify and make adjustments based on that?
Okay, so direction of the board is that we'll have that item brought back on future agenda. And now as to the consent calendar item 4A, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move approval of 4A.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion in second. Can you, clerk, conduct the roll?
Yes, Supervisor McGordy?
Yes.
Supervisor Mulhern?
Yes.
Supervisor Williams?
Yes.
Chair Jertie?
Yes.
And Supervisor Hashak?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thanks. Next, we're going to go to actually supervisor reports. Caught everybody off guard there. Do you want to note that Supervisor McGordy has two letters for the board, and he could quickly just address those?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. So the first one is a letter thanking Governor Newsom for coming to our community to announce the drought emergency in the Russian River Mendocino-Sonoma area. And I keep seeing lots of pictures of that event and particularly the press democrats. So, you know, it really brought a lot of attention to our plight. And the second letter I sent is, is an effort being done by RCRC and other counties to try to augment the budget for University of California Cooperative Extension, basically to replace two positions that are open in Mendocino County as well as about another 80 around the state, saying that we support augmentation of the budget.
So if there's no objection, we'll send those letters off? Okay, great. Any other supervisor reports? Supervisor McGordy?
So yesterday was a very high-profile meeting that, on Zoom, that Congressman Huffman made and put together, and it consisted of not only Congressman Huffman, but Congressman Thompson, as well as State Senator McGuire and Assemblyman Wood, Supervisor Mulhern, and Supervisor, I'm forgetting her name, from Sonoma County, the chair of Sonoma County's board, and as well as a lot of other people from agencies and so forth, kind of talking about what's going on with our drought and promise of funding to do improvements. And it's significant for us because they're, they're ready to fund shovel-ready projects on a wide array of water conveyances, including sewage treatment, which I know is an issue in Supervisor Williams' hometown of Mendocino. So there's opportunities here, and we'll want to work to really pull together our drought task force with the goal of identifying some of the things that need fixing in our, our community on water systems. And we really need to pull this together fairly quickly so that we're, we're in the loop. And the problem is, we don't really have shovel-ready projects for the most part. I know the city of Ukiah has a continuation of their Purple Pipe is one of the things that they could apply for to bring the tertiary-treated recycled water up to the high school and the cemetery and the golf course. So that probably would go on the list, but we have a real opportunity here that we shouldn't miss. And our drought task force needs to start getting functional. There's, there's already things being, going on in the Russian River area, but we need to pull in the rest of the county. So Supervisor Hashak and our Honorable Naut-Haw Committee will want to get that thing ramped up and moving so that we are able to respond to the needs of our community while there's grant monies available, both probably for sure on the, on the state level and possibly on the federal level as well. So this is a time for us to really take stock and make a move.
Supervisor Hashak.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Jertie. So Supervisor McGordy and I met as the ad hoc for the strategic plan yesterday, and we are bringing that forward to the board on June 9th, I believe. We do have a couple applicants that we're looking at, and hopefully, you know, we'll see that the process is clear to everyone when we bring it forth. And so that's the timeline. We hope to have this person on board by July 1st, where we can start the strategic plan process, and the goal is to be done by the end of the calendar year. We also, the cannabis ad hoc met last week and talked about the process for the sensitive species and habitat review and what the, you know, how it jives with the affidavit. And so making sure that the county's process is adhering to what we, we as a board determined a month or so ago. And then, like Supervisor McGordy said, the ad hoc on the drought is looking to get moving on it. And we've already done some preliminary work in getting a list of all the water districts together, and we hope to get this task force up and running. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other supervisor reports? Supervisor Mulhern?
Yeah, I'll just briefly say that Supervisor McGordy and I met with the Redwood Valley folks on Zoom on Thursday, and we're meeting in Potter Valley on this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at the Potter Valley Community Center. And the rest of my report is in writing on my website.
And I just want to add to that, first, thank you Supervisor Mulhern for working with us, and thanks to the University of California Cooperative Extension Office for working with us. And the thing that you don't get when you, when you read all of these requests for assistance in the communities is kind of the raw emotion that's still there from, from people who are probably suffering from PTSD from this really scary event that ended up with some people dying and other people losing everything that they owned. And it's something that I'm glad that we did. owned. And it's something that, that I'm glad that we did because I, certainly I've been aware of, of this. I've gone to most of the RV MAC meetings for a little over a year now and I, I, you know, hear people talk about the fire, but to get everyone collectively together where they're expressing how they're feeling was really interesting. And I'm happy that I had that opportunity to get a sense of, of what's going on in the background of the community because it's still something that's very painful for a lot of people.
Okay. Any other supervisor reports? I'll, I'll just mention for the benefit of the drought ad hoc that in talking with the city of Fort Bragg, they have, they do have a few projects that are drought related that they're, they're working up plans for digging, basically dig deeper ponds at the water treatment plant, which would increase their water storage pretty inexpensively as I understand it, and a couple of similar projects like that. So they, they do have some drought projects that they're developing. Also, I wanted to just thank county staff for meeting with PG&E and a subcontractor of PG&E and who has a program available directed by the California Public Utilities Commission paid for by ratepayers, which does energy analysis of public facilities. And so it looks like we will have a free, because paid, ratepayer paid, funded, energy analysis of all county buildings that are served by PG&E and/or Sonoma Clean Power. And, and then that'll help the county staff kind of prioritize energy conservation projects for the, for the county buildings. So there's a couple reports in me. Okay, all right. Well, then we will go on to item, we have an off agenda item, and that's the executive office report. Can we go to that now?
Chair Gerdy, this is Charlotte Scott, Assistant County Counsel. For modifications to the agenda and off agenda item, the board would need to establish, one, a finding that there's a need right now for consideration of this item, and two, that the need arose after the posting of the agenda. And that would need to be established by a fourth, fifth vote of the board.
Well, can we hear from the Chief Executive Officer as to the reasons?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Scott and Chair Gerdy. Yes, there is a time-sensitive item for the Office of Emergency Services. Our OES Coordinator Brent Blazer is bringing forward, conducting actually a countywide test. And so this board needs to know that. And so the timing is good today that this board gets this information. And there, there, this came forward and so it did not get on the agenda. And because of the time sensitivity, we went ahead and did an off agenda item. I hope the board will understand that and that I'll be able to move forward with this item. Thank you.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to add the executive office report at, at the agenda? Go ahead.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and second. We have a roll call. Supervisor McGordy?
Yes.
Supervisor Hashak?
Yes.
Supervisor Mulhern?
Yes.
Chair Gerdy?
Yes.
And Supervisor Williams?
Yes.
Okay, now we go to the reports.
Thank you, Chair Gerdy. I'll make this as brief as I can. And again, I appreciate the board taking this as an off agenda item and the assistance of County Counsel. On page four of the CEO report, there is an update from the Office of Emergency Services. And I would like to do something I don't normally do, which is read this word for word because I do think it's important and I'll be as quick as I can. The Mendocino County Office of Emergency Services maintains the operational areas mass notifications, notification systems in partnership with local, state and federal partners. And in preparation for the 2021 wildfire season, Mendocino County OES believes it's important to update all operational area partners and the public regarding the ever-changing capabilities and readiness of the county's electronic notification systems. Additionally, OES intends to introduce the draft Mass Notification Annex, which has been developed in partnership with the county's Alert and Warning Subcommittee in order to meet compliance with Senate Bill 833. Mendocino County OES will be conducting a live test of the Wireless Emergency Network, WIA system, within Mendocino County. This test will be conducted countywide and is tentatively, tentatively scheduled for May 26th, 2021 at 12 noon. An alternate test date of June 2nd at, at 12 noon has been scheduled in the event that there are unforeseen conflicts. This test has three objectives. One, to ensure system activators are ready for the pending fire season. Two, to enhance public awareness of the new OES website and newly developed evacuation zones. And three, to validate the OES website scalability and functionality prior to an actual disaster. And the draft Mendocino County Operational Area Emergency Operations Plan Annex Mass Notification is attached to this report. So Chair Gerdy, I would like to thank our OES Coordinator Brent Blazer, and I believe he is on the, he is in the Zoom with us. And I'd also like to thank Sheriff Kendall for his efforts, his ongoing efforts with the early, early warning systems. So attached to the CEO report is the annex, it's the Mass Notification Annex. It's rather lengthy, but it certainly is a good read and, and good for the board to be aware of. So at this time, if I could just take a couple minutes and introduce Brent Blazer, if he has any comments to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Carmel. And thank you for the, to the board for giving me a few moments today. I just really wanted to have an opportunity to share with you what the status of our system is, to, you know, invoke confidence in where we're at. Also kind of let you know what recent changes we made and then what the pending improvements that we're working towards are. Because this is technology and it's a comprehensive program of a lot of different, it's not just NICSOL or iPOS, it's sirens, there's all sorts of aspects to this. So I just want to make sure, you know, we're all on board and going in the same direction. Essentially, again, this is a comprehensive program, but specifically to the electronic notification system, our contract renewal happens every year in April. So we are, have renewed the contract. Right now, the system has about 118,000 total contacts in it. Out of those, 55,000 are NICSOL subscribers. Those are two different things. And about 42,000 are not geo-coded, meaning that they're not like a pin on the map. They have, maybe they're identified by zip code. And that could be a, a lot of different reasons why. And I just share that information just because, just because you see 118,000 contacts doesn't mean that they're not duplicative or there's not other issues that could prevent a notification from actually reaching that end user. So those are the real numbers that we have right now moving into fire season. OES, the updates to the system, as, as Carmel has shared, we have a plan now. We had something in place, but now it's much more dialed in and it meets the requirements of Senate Bill 833 and best practices to the most recent things that are in the industry. With that said, you know, we'll bring that back to, you know, we shop that plan to partners and we'll bring it back to the board for approval probably in about 30 days. But we just want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to weigh in. It's gone through fire, fire districts, through city, county partners and the different PSAP managers and such. So I do feel like it's a comprehensive product at this point. Some of the other updates that we did, we have actually purchased the most recent data sets that we can buy and integrate into the alert and warning system, meaning that we've adopted the white pages, VoIP phone numbers that are usually not out there in the public, things like that from providers. So our data sets for the public, that's open source information are the most current. That happened as of like a month or so ago. We've streamlined the registration process online where you used to ask a lot of questions. Now we're just really dialed into just getting your name, your email, your phone number, just making that process as easy as possible. We've developed a testing procedures monthly to make sure we stay in line with FEMA and we work with PSAP and our dispatch center to make sure we're doing that on a monthly basis and having strong protocols for different types of events. And some of the things that I want to make sure you guys are aware of as we move forward is these contracts to use of NICSOL, the pricing has significantly changed this year. So where it used to be unlimited usage under the contract for a set rate, now it's moving towards a credit-based usage models, meaning that every time we send a message, every text, every email, every so many seconds on a phone call is now going to be, you know, charged back to us. You know, so basically we have 4 million credits that we can use a year. On a normal year at current rate, we use about 350 million. So just one exercise that we did this year on the coastal with the tsunami, that was 24,000 contacts to do that. That meaning that each one of those contacts potentially were three credits per contact. So you can see how fast you can use these up. With that said, a lot of counties are starting to reassess what their policies are of when they're going to use the alert and warning systems, when, when they're going to do NICSOL. You're going to see it dial back and using more social media and others, other things because of, of the cost aspects and because of technology is changing where we can use organic systems to do some of the same things without, you know, being more responsible with, with the contracts and such. It's just something that we need to keep abreast of because another big change is the state is going to have a statewide contact, contract, and we're going to probably jump on that because we're on the same, we use the same exact system, we use in the same protocols. So it'll increase our ability to train and have redundancy across the state and also reduce our costs for the, for the public. And, and so that's going to be a great thing. We're just waiting for them to, to finish up the contract. It was supposed to be done a few months ago and they're still working with the vendor.
Brent, Brent, you have a question from Supervisor Williams?
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
What is the cost per text message? Or, or, or if you don't have that, what is the cost to text everyone in the county one time?
I don't have that specifically. I can tell you that, you know, if you were to break it down essentially, usually it's like 10 cents. If you were to look at our contract right now, just for, not even NICSOL, NICSOL costs us like 65 and change every year. And then the alert warning system costs us like 24,500. So we're, we're into this for at least 330,000 a year. Plus, we have, now that we're buying data sets every year, that's another 4,000 or 5,000 a year. So when you break that down per the 40 million, that's essentially what we're, we're paying because we're essentially using 400 million every year. Just in, we have a very conservative approach, not say conservative, unless we're asking the public to do something, that's kind of the policy that when we use these alert warning systems or some of, some of the more severe ones, NICSOL and such. And I say that in the aspect that when you look at the trends, if you over notify, you see a lot more people on withdrawal from the notification system than, than you actually get during, during the event. You see a lot of registration and then if they feel like it's information they don't need, they start really pulling back out. I can break that down for you though, Supervisor Williams. So with that said, those are kind of the big changes that we've had in the last year. Pending improvements, like I said, we're moving to the state contract as soon as they're done. This website, I'm, I'm telling you guys about it because what the website does is not just a website, it's the ability to have a short URL that we can put in the WIA messaging and such and drive people there and build templated messaging that dispatchers aren't trying to figure out what to say in the moment. It's a little bit easier just to have short character counts and a quick message that you can then expand on and other resources. The reason that's important is because when you send out a WIA message to 40, 50,000 people, or it ends up in a press release somewhere that ends up on social media or on the media, and you have outside people clicking on it, now all of a sudden your, your county webpage generally collapses because it has too many hits hitting the website. And so we needed a site that's expanding, that it will expand and scale automatically, that has redundancy. So we'll actually probably most likely be hosting this on two different servers outside the county. So it creates a lot of cybersecurity aspects and then makes it redundant. So if one goes down, it automatically moves to the other. So it's the integration aspect with the alert and warning. And I say this because when you see a NICSOL message, you click on that link, that's what NICSOL's doing for us. It's making a webpage where you can add extra content that automatically scales. And unless you have that capability built into your county infrastructure or other ways, you don't have that ability. And that's a shortage that a lot of counties have seen with these big fires. Even, even last year, putting out information, we were using Bitly type messaging, which was great, but if the public wanted to find that content without the link, there was no way for them to Google and find it. Now, we can really put information in one central location and make it easier for people to find information before and during a disaster or at least redirect them. So tentatively, that, that URL will be mendoready.org. And we're working with, with them staff now to, to really build that website out. So again, May 26th, really the concept is that we'll just send out a WIA message to the whole county. And then the message will essentially just read test message Mendocino County. Go to mendoready.org for more info. No action needed at this time. Essentially, that's a very short message that will fit in the character count limitations. It also identifies that if it moves outside of the county for any reason, you always have bleed over. The, the other counties will realize this was only for Mendocino. And essentially next week, we'll start the coordination aspects to make sure that we start doing a media campaign and all those other aspects that hopefully as many people as possible know about it before it happens on May 26th. And basically 11 o'clock, we'll start reaching out across the county to make sure there's no real world emergencies. And if there's a real world emergency, a fire or whatever, we'll put out messages to say that we've canceled the exercise for today and then we'll move it back a week until June 2nd. And hopefully we can do it at that time. So I'm going to stop there. I really appreciate this opportunity. I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same, on the same foot. And if there's any problems, you know, we can work them out or, or get your approval and such.
Okay, Supervisor Williams?
What budget unit is covering this mendoready.org?
So actually the mendoready.org, we had, we had savings from a grant from 2017. Because of all these disasters, we've had to extend grants. And we've been fortunate enough by the federal government to get extensions on the performance periods. So literally, this was paid for all, except for some hosting aspects, was all contracted and paid for out of the savings that I found in that grant year. The only expense we have moving forward will be the maintenance. And because this isn't a typical website where you just pay, you know, a hundred bucks a year to host it, depending on the level of service that we define after this exercise, because we're going to see how much traffic drives there, we'll just determine how much service that we'll need per month to maintain it. And that can be much more expensive than a regular website, but is pretty essential.
Brent, as we approach fire season and it's not looking good out there in terms of the dryness of the climate, I'm thinking back to last year's fire in, outside of Brook Trails. And I happen to be talking to someone here in Fort Bragg who lived in Brook Trails and he, and he was in Fort Bragg at the time. And, and the, the notice for that alert was not very far in advance of the notice for evacuation. And so by the time he got to Brook Trails from Fort Bragg, he, he could not, well, he did, couldn't immediately get into his house to remove someone who he was caring for that really couldn't, you know, take care of himself. And so, so I'm just wondering, with fast-moving fires, there's probably not a lot of ways to give people much advanced notice of a possible evacuation. But I'm just thinking that in that example where people live in one part of the county may be working in another, if, if the OES has an opportunity to give people more advanced notice of a possible evacuation, that, that probably would be helpful.
Supervisor Gerdy, I completely agree. What I try to get people to understand is, you know, we're in the office, right? Or really, we have a system that we've kind of leaned ahead, Mendocino County's kind of leaned ahead and kind of passed this into the dispatch center. So then you have people there 24/7. A lot of counties, the, the message originators are off in the middle of the night and such. So one, we've leaned forward that way. But the dynamic, what I hope the public and, and partners understand is the sequence of events is really that somebody calls 911, reports an incident or dispatch or somebody realizes there's an incident, and somebody from law enforcement or fire have to get out there and evaluate the And somebody from law enforcement or fire have to get out there and evaluate the situation, right? Because you don't just, just because it's a fire doesn't mean it's moving quickly or it's threatening anything. So first, they got to get out there. Somebody experienced has to say, okay, yeah, this is, this is threatening an area and that we can't do door to door or notify these people fast enough. So now we have to use these alert and warning systems. And they have to define how big of an area do they want to evacuate? And so that that takes time, right? Then they communicate that back to dispatch. Dispatch has to kind of help them craft whatever that message is. Then, after you know the location, that, you know, what what is the want to do with what you're going to tell the public. Then if you want to translate it, you gotta hopefully have time to translate it too. And then you have to load it into the system in different ways because there's Nixle formatting, there's Wea formatting, there's, you know, all these different email character contents from each and and all that. You got to double check it. So I'm going to tell you, it's a very stressful. The more we can streamline those messaging content, then we can get it out faster. But it's it's always a, it's always a difficult task.
On the positive side, he did get the Nixle alert. Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, so I I think this is a really great idea. I'm happy to see it moving forward. I guess I I would like for it to be budgeted and I'd like to see the plan rather than we implement it. And then we find out about the ongoing costs. And and I think it should be integrated with the IT master plan.
So
So a little bit, a little bit of work on the front, not not to derail the effort. I think it's really worthwhile. I'm happy to see it. But but I think the board's role is to make sure we have a documented plan, we know where it lives, and we know what the ongoing cost will be.
Yeah, and and that's exactly, we've been paying for it out of the Homeland Security Grant. We can definitely do that for you Supervisor Williams. The one thing I forgot to mention is, this isn't just using the alert and warning system. Really, it's an education opportunity and outreach to the public. So we're kind of piggybacking off that system. And on the webpage, we'll have the newest evacuation zones that we've built out this last year with fire service and such. You know, so now the public will have an opportunity to to learn what those shapes are for evacuation zones and what the descriptions are and kind of evaluate that as before we move into fire season. I can't tell you that it's a perfect product. I can tell you that we are ahead of the curve. Most of the counties around us do not have evacuation zones established. It was a big lift, and now it's an opportunity to get the public engagement aspect and to be as best prepared we can be for the summer. And then, you know, if those zones and as more input comes back, we can keep adjusting them. But first, we need people to understand where that information lives and how we're using them and such, and how weird that what zone do they fall in? So when they see that messaging in the future, they'll know about it.
Okay, well, thank you for the update. Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, Supervisor McGordy?
I'm really supportive of any planning so that we and and notification of the public, because that's always the the difficult part of trying to figure out what's happening, where is it happening, and should I worry? So if we're addressing that, I think that that's absolutely critical. And I agree with Supervisor Williams that this needs to be budgeted and and not kind of done on on a sort of picking up scraps basis. So I think it's a very important function of the county. And increasingly, we seem to be faced with wildfire emergencies, and we want to be sure we're prepared.
So so with that, could we ask for a formal plan with budgeting to come back next meeting?
Looking to the CEO for the schedule.
Chair Jordy, the meetings on the twenty fourth are two joint meetings with different boards. So that there would not be any time. And the twenty fifth, I think we have a fairly full schedule. I guess I would ask Brent if he would, if he would have this information and be ready by the twenty fifth. I think that this may fit better with our budget hearings on June eighth. So if that's okay with the board and that date works for Brent, we could, he could come back and do his presentation either on the eighth or ninth, either at the beginning or the end of budget hearings.
Yeah, so I would support that. And I don't want to hold this up. But I would like for us to allocate the money and approve a plan before we implement it. Right? It seems like it's a good idea, but maybe it's out of order. Like, we've just gone ahead with it and we haven't yet approved the the expense. And there will be ongoing expenses.
So Brent, would either June eighth or ninth work for you for a presentation to this board?
Well, I might need a little bit more. I can get with the CEO and such after this. But honestly, the exercise part of this is, I need to be able to finish that. So I probably need to be later than June ninth. The reason we're doing it is, there's a, there's a huge price range of service that you can pay for when it comes to services to support a site like this. So by doing the exercise and then getting the analytics back afterwards, we have a better idea of what we can, what we want to pay for moving forward. When it comes to the alert and warning system, we've, you know, you're going with the one vendor. All those fees are set and essentially we have an approval authority for the grant. And so we wrap those costs and manage it that way. But I can definitely come back with all the expenses. I just think first do the analysis of the exercise and then then say what this cost is moving forward with the website scalability and such.
So if it's okay with this board, Brent, do you think you could be ready by June twenty second? That would be the next meeting after the budget hearings.
I think that'd be much better. Thank you.
So Chair Jordy, if this board is willing to wait, it doesn't sound like, it sounds like between the exercise and gathering the information that that Brent needs a little bit more time. So would June twenty second work for this board?
It sounds reasonable to me. Supervisor Hesek?
Thank you, Chair Jordy. I was just going to say that that sounds fine. And just as long as we get the, you know, most effective communication system in place. You know, that's what's most important and that people can rely on it because that's what they're counting on us to do.
Thank you.
Okay, so I I'm looking around the board, not seeing any objections. So I think, yeah, the twenty second sounds like a good timeframe. So and I hope the pilot test project works out well. Okay, is there any other action you need on on that item? Or do you want, we have your executive office report. It was submitted to us and it's online. Is there anything else we want to discuss about that?
Chair Jordy, no, this was the one key item that I wanted to be certain that the board saw. Again, I want to thank Brent for his work. And you have the CEO report. If there's any questions, I could be contacted, absolutely. But I think we could move on.
Okay, all right. All right, well, then, thank you. That takes us to five A, which is discussion possible action, including a presentation with Pacific Gas Electric regarding public safety power shut offs and planning and preparation.
Excuse me, Chair Jordy?
Yes?
It appears that we do have one caller on the line for item eight A.
Okay, all right, sorry, didn't know.
First on the line will be Ron Edwards.
Ron, you can go ahead and unmute.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood this agenda item. But I do fully support the county going forward with any way to notify the citizens quicker. Thank you.
That concludes public comment for item eight A.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, now we'll go to five A, which is regarding public safety power shut offs. So I think this will be led off by the executive office.
Good morning, Mr. Chair members of the board. Steve Dunnecliff with the County Executive Office. And I'm not getting an option to turn on my camera. But to share with the board, as Mendocino County experienced in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, PG&E turns off the power in the interest of public safety during severe weather that threatens a portion of the electric system. These power shut offs are known as public safety power shut offs. Based on a judge's recommendation, the weather criteria will be reduced this year for P S P S event triggers. Based on an additional recommendation from the same judge, tall trees outside PG&E easement areas known as overstrike trees will also receive new analysis when P S P S events are triggered or considered. Both of these issues will increase likelihood of P S P S events in the future. As the board and community are aware, in twenty twenty, PG&E installed infrastructure and staged mobile generators to power microgrids in Mendocino County during a P S P S event. While the new infrastructure remains in place, it's notable for the board and the community that PG&E has not been able to commit to actually staging generators in Mendocino County this year. With those introductory comments, I'd like to to turn this over to Allison Talbot, who's here today from PG&E to provide what's really becoming an annual presentation related to their planning and preparation for the coming year. And with Allison as resources are Eric Hagerty, Rich Noonan, John Costa, and Bobby Harlan.
Good morning, Supervisors. This is Allison. Are you able to hear me, please?
Yes.
I'm having some technical issues par for the course this year. So I'm going to ask my colleague Bobby to run the slides for me. And I will be on my phone. I really apologize for this not working smoothly. So again, good morning, Supervisors. This is Allison Talbot, Local Government Relations Representative for Mendocino and Humboldt Counties for PG&E. I'm calling in from my home just outside of Eureka. As Mr. Dunnecliff mentioned, I do have several coworkers with me, hopefully, who are not having the similar tech issue that I am. We have Eric Hagerty, who runs our vegetation vegetation management program for the region. John Costa, who manages the Northern Region Government Relations Team, and Rich Noonan, Senior Public Safety Specialist for Mendocino County. And today, with support from the team, I'll talk about what we're doing to reduce the threat of wildfire in Mendocino County and system wide. I hope to emphasize ways PG&E can assist customers with preparations for a public safety power shut off or P S P S. The next slide is a safety slide. We start all of our meetings that way. It's sort of easy to gloss over. But as you can see, there's some general safety tips. I'll call your attention to the one titled Notify Emergency Services. I was on a call at the beginning of the pandemic where a coworker experienced a life safety emergency. Work from home was very new for everybody, and none of us were prepared with a plan to assist in that kind of situation. And it really was pretty horrible to hear the fear and panic in her voice and not know what to do to help. So like all things emergency preparedness, it pays to have a plan. Since that occurrence, we remind coworkers to break into a call if needed, to use the chat function for sharing their location or to disengage immediately and call emergency services. Thanks for going through that one with me. The next slide. Thank you, Bobby. So at PG&E, our most important responsibility is the safety of our customers and communities. California, as we all know, continues to experience an increase in wildfire risk and a longer season. And over the last decade, the frequency and severity of wildfires has increased exponentially. So on this slide is one of the tools we use when assessing wildfire risk. It's the Fire Threat Map of California. It was developed by the California Public Utilities Commission in coordination with CAL FIRE and the Forest Service. It's based on input from electric utilities, communication infrastructure providers, and local public safety agencies. It really helps us plan for potential wildfire and especially focus our prevention efforts. As you can see on the map, nearly a third of, excuse me, of the electric lines that provide our customers with power are now in high fire threat areas. And you can see the Mendocino pullout as well. It shows orange as a tier two elevated risk and red is the tier three extreme risk. You can find this map by visiting cpc.ca.gov/firethreatmaps. On the next slide, I wanted to share with you how we're continuing to evolve our Community Wildfire Safety Program, or CWSP. It's in order to strengthen and improve our electric system for the safety of customers and communities. The the focus areas include meeting, but also exceeding state vegetation safety standards. Continuing to build a safer and more resilient system by hardening lines and installing sectionalizing devices. We're testing and using new tools and technologies to pinpoint how to best prevent and respond to the risk of wildfires. And of course, working year round to improve public safety power shut off events. We all, as we all rely on electricity every day, we want to work with our customers on solutions that minimize risks to our infrastructure during times of high fire threat. The next slide is going to cover sort of what's new this year. We're building on the improvements that were made in twenty twenty and continuing to reduce wildfire risks through hardening the electric grid, addressing vegetation, tracking weather conditions, and monitoring for wildfires. We're working to reduce P S P S impacts by installing over two hundred seventy five additional sectionalizing devices and transmission switches to limit the number of customers who are impacted by these events. And we're continuing to improve our weather modeling and refining our forecasting. We are preparing ten more substations in the territory to accept temporary generation. However, as Mr. Dunnecliff mentioned, differently than last year, we are not pre-staging generators in Mendocino County. And I will address that short, that issue shortly. And then finally, on this slide, we're supporting our customers and communities by providing more resources before, during, and after P S P S events. We're sending customer notifications in sixteen languages. And we're providing new address alerts, which allow customers and non-customers to sign up to receive P S P S alerts about any address that they choose. It's really a significant improvement from past practice. Previously, customers who lived in like a master meter setting, for example, a mobile home park or some apartment buildings or folks whose landlord is the customer of record, they weren't able to look up if they would be impacted by a P S P S event. We've now enabled a system where you can look for events by address. It's also quite useful if you're concerned for an elderly loved one or want to track daycare or your office. We're also providing batteries to low income medical baseline customers in high fire threat areas. We're targeting three hundred and seventy ADA accessible community resource centers. We're providing meal replacement options for customers in forty six counties, including Mendocino. And we're expanding our partnerships with customer based organizations to better support our customers who have access and functional needs. The next slide is going to be a little bit more specific to Mendocino County. So on this slide, we've provided an overview of some of our local wildfire safety and customer support efforts, including system hardening, sectionalizing devices, veg management, CRCs, weather stations, and cameras. Some of these numbers, though, I think would benefit from some explanation. For example, the Enhanced Vegetation Management Line, it reflects zero miles complete this year. I wanted to, I guess, reassure you, we have actually completed a good portion of that work. But there is a certification process that hasn't occurred yet, so I couldn't report those miles. But work is, some work is complete, more is ongoing and planned. Also, the system hardening number reflects four different projects around the county. But it doesn't include other resilience work that we're completing, including our routine vegetation management, manual pole clearing being completed by our safety infrastructure protection team. As well, we're doing substation defensible space work. We're getting As well, we're doing substation defensible space work. We're getting ready to begin that shortly. And we're continuing to work with the Mendocino Fire Safety Council to fund defensible space work in the county. And finally, some of your constituents may have noticed, we have commenced air patrols in advance of the PSPS season. Those helicopter patrols help identify hazards. They provide for better resource mapping and help reduce restoration times and help us plan for our in-event responses. To limit the number of customers during a PSPS event, we're continuing to install sectionalizing devices and automating some existing devices. To date, we've installed 26 of these devices in Mendocino. This year, we'll install four additional ones. What they do is separate the electric grid into smaller parts, allowing us to de-energize quite targeted areas during severe weather and fire conditions, and reduce the total number of customers who experience a PSPS event. I'm going to touch briefly on the substation generation now. In 2020, we worked to lessen PSPS impacts by preparing substations throughout our service territory to receive temp gen. And we staged temporary generation at specific substations and service yards to use during events. We prepared, I'm sure some of you remember, we prepared 10 substations last year to accept generation in Mendocino, and we pre-staged generators at five of those substations. Throughout the last year, however, we've made improvements to weather modeling, grid operations, and overall system resiliency, which means many of these substations are now significantly less likely to experience a PSPS-related outage. So while the substations are still prepared, they're ready to accept generation, we will not be pre-staging generators as the likelihood of needing them has been quite significantly reduced. I am going to move on to the next slide and talk a little bit more specifically about public safety power shut offs. Some of this will be remedial for some of you, but I do think there's benefit in going over it briefly. For the safety of our customers and communities, public safety power shut off continues to be a necessary tool in our toolkit. However, it is a last resort. High winds can cause tree branches and debris to contact energized electric lines, damage our equipment, and cause a wildfire. As a result, we may turn off power during severe weather conditions for public safety. I want to emphasize, these events are always weather-driven, and they are only called when extreme weather and wildfire risk are present. The part that causes some consternation, of course, is because electricity can travel several miles from the generation source to get to a person's home or business. They could be affected by a PSPS if the electrical infrastructure that serves them is affected by the high winds and severe weather, even if the weather itself is miles away. You know, you often hear folks say, well, it's not windy at my house, but the lines that serve them are traversing areas where the conditions are are a lot worse. The next slide is talking a little bit more about what conditions lead to a PSPS event. And when deciding if power must be shut off, we review a combination of factors, not any one particularly. We're looking at low humidity levels, forecast of high winds, the dry material that's on the ground, and vegetation that may come in contact with a power line. Other considerations include a red flag warning declared by the National Weather Service, as well as real-time, on-the-ground observations from our Wildfire Safety Operations Center and from our crews who are working across the service territory. Of course, every wildfire season is different. With the ongoing drought, the conditions, and our commitment to safety, that's how we're going to determine the number of times we need to shut off power. It's really going to be conditions-based. For this next, in fact, the next two slides, Supervisors, I am I'm just going to have to ask for your patience while I go through these next two slides. It's pretty new and developing information. I haven't yet synthesized the potential local impacts. I want to assure you, this will not be the only time you hear from me on this topic. And I look forward to providing more detailed information about the circuits and areas that could be impacted as that information becomes available. After each PSPS event, we review the weather conditions and then the associated damages experienced to our system, and we incorporate those lessons learned to continue to evolve the the program. After last year's wildfire season and the drier-than-average winter and spring we just experienced, we have developed additional criteria for the PSPS program. More than 90% of our five-and-a-half million customers don't live in areas that are a focus of the program and are less likely to be impacted. Also, and importantly, really, I will emphasize, due to recent grid updates, we do not expect a return to the large-scale PSPS events of 2019, which Mendocino County is quite familiar. So compared to last year, under similar weather conditions, customers who live in the areas of the highest wildfire risk may experience more frequent PSPS events. We're looking at how this may impact our customers and communities, and again, I plan on sharing more Mendocino County-specific information as soon as it's available. You will hear from me with further details about this. The next slide, you can see a chart. This is the second slide that I'm asking for your patience on. It's a 10-year look back of potential PSPS events in Mendocino County. It's part of it is based on the 2020 criteria that we used for PSPS. And the average number of public safety events, sorry, PSPS events, based on this look back would have been about one per year. When accounting for the additional criteria of the overstrike trees, the average number of PSPS events would have been one and a half per year. So customers who live in the areas of the highest risk may experience more frequent PSPS events. The analysis shows that large, really large events would only get slightly larger in most cases. Medium kind of sized events could increase slightly more, and customers in certain high-fire-threat areas will experience more smaller events. So again, even with these proposed conditions, we do not expect to see events that were as large as those in 2019. I am going to move on to my last few slides and then obviously be available for questions. The following slide talks about how customers are notified. We always do our best to share what we know about the weather and our equipment as soon as we can, keeping in mind, of course, that weather conditions can be quite uncertain. But customers can expect to receive notifications two days before the power would go off when we're in watch mode, a day before, still in watch mode, and then just before de-energizing power lines when we're in the warning mode. And then, of course, once a day during the event and once we have restored power. We'll provide updates to our customers through automated calls, texts, and emails. Here is where I encourage you and all of your constituents to review the contact information we have on file for you by visiting pge.com/miewildfirealerts. Like I mentioned before, we've launched the address alerts, so those who aren't a PG&E account holder can also receive notifications for any address. We also provide PSPS updates at pge.com to local news and radio and through social media channels. The next slide is going to talk a little bit more about customer support programs. We're doing more. We're trying really hard to do more to help customers and communities before, during, and after PSPS events. We're partnering with community-based organizations, working side by side to provide support and resources throughout a public safety power shut off event. We are expanding our language offerings, providing information regarding events in 16 non-English languages. We're increasing meal replacement op options, excuse me, by collaborating with local food banks and Meals on Wheels to provide food replacement packages to cover counties likely to be impacted during a public safety power shut off. We're collaborating with CFILCs, I'm sorry, with the California Foundation for Independent Living Centers, Disability Disaster Access and Resources Program. It enables qualifying customers who use electrical medical devices to access backup portable batteries through a grant, lease-to-own, or financial loan application. Additional assistance through this program includes access to transportation resources, hotel vouchers, and food stipends following a PSPS event. We're also providing batteries through the portable battery program we have to low-income medical baseline customers with critical medical needs. And new, especially new this year, and I think of note in Mendocino County, we're providing generator rebates to customers who depend on well-water pumps and live in high-fire-threat areas. They can qualify for a $300 rebate, or if they're on the CARE or FARA program, a $500 rebate for a portable power generator. I would be, I would welcome any suggestions on additional community-based organizations that that perhaps we should be trying to partner with in the community, and can, we could talk more about that at your discretion. The next slide is about the Community Resource Centers. During a PSPS event, we open the CRCs where community members can access resources. It's a safe location to meet basic power needs, to get up-to-date information about the PSPS event, and a place to get water and light snacks and other essential items, really just to reduce hardship to the customers. All of our resource centers reflect appropriate COVID-19 health considerations and state and county guidelines. Last year, we activated, well, I should have reminded you at the beginning, last year, we had one PSPS event in Mendocino County impacting about 200 customers, and we had activated three CRCs. The next slide, it's kind of a busy one, but it's got some really good information on it. We have a variety of wildfire preparedness tools. Our Public Safety Power Shut Off Address Alerts, information and resources available in more than 250 languages. Our weather and PSPS forecasting webpage can give you a seven-day look ahead, what we're predicting for PSPS each day. We've got preparedness tools and activities for kids, the Safety Action Center that has some pretty useful videos, for example, teaching people how to open an electric garage door, for example, when the power is out. And our backup power webpage. All of these, you know, you can see the websites on there, but the the one-stop shop where you can click over to the rest of these resources is pge.com/wildfiresafety. Supervisors, I believe that's my last informational slide. So I will stay on the line for questions.
Allison, I'll start it up. So we've definitely seen a ramping up by PG&E and their subcontractors of clearing trees around the perimeter of the power lines. And but if we go back maybe about five slides, and it shows the potential for shutting down power lines in a severe weather event, if there are trees that could fall, could reach the power line. Even with all the extra tree clearing that that's taken place around the power lines, I'm thinking along Highway 20 between Willets and Fort Bragg and and north of Willets, where you have tall redwood trees that don't normally pose a risk to the power lines. Is there a situation where those power lines would be turned off due to this new regulation?
Well, I will say that this new criteria, again, is the impacts are anticipated to go, we would go from, on average, one event a year to one and a half. I mean, that's like saying you have two and a half kids. I don't really 100% understand that, but my understanding is that this criteria works in conjunction with the rest, including humidity, temperature, red flag, wind speeds. So the trees alone certainly won't be the the cause of shutting off the power, but but it would just be another criteria. I'm not sure I'm answering your question very well, though, Chair Jordy. Would this be an okay moment to see if if I can access my my phone of friends, if you will, the others PG&E staff? Again, this is the, this particular criteria is so new, I really, I don't like failing you guys here, but I just don't have a strong enough understanding of it. Could I see if John Costa, Eric, or Rich Noonan are able to unmute?
Yeah, this is, this is John Costa. I just want to make sure I understand the question.
So PG&E has done a great job of creating a greater clearance around the power lines. And but in the northern part of Mendocino County, between Willets and Fort Bragg, there are, you know, tall redwood trees on either side of the power line, but they're they're set back a bit. But they, I would think quite a few of them could fall on the power line, as well as north of Willets. As again, you're in redwood country, and you've got redwood trees on setback, but on either side of the of the power lines. And I'm just wondering if this new regulation really contemplated, you know, large corridors of of tall trees like redwood trees.
Yeah, the great question. So this, what this did is take into account all trees large enough to fall within what we call the strike area, the fall zone. So trees outside of, in most cases, outside of our current easement. And it's been identified as something that we should consider moving forward when looking at a PSPS event. So all all those trees in that particular scenario are taken into account, species as well. But as Allison indicated, it's one factor among many that we take into consideration when determining a PSPS event.
Additionally, Chair Jordy, and thank you, John. I didn't, I don't think I emphasized or even mentioned that this is for distribution lines and not transmission. That's just another piece of information.
So for clarification, distribution line, not transmission, so is, are you, so the power lines between Fort Bragg and Willets are, would you consider them distribution or transmission?
I think the big lines you're considering are transmission lines.
Okay. Okay, other questions and comments from Board members? Supervisor Heschek.
Thank you, Chair Jordy. Thank you, Allison, for this presentation. And I'm sure you've heard before about the consideration of generators in the Willets area. And my understanding is that you're not considering any more generator placement. And, you know, Willets certainly is in a very high zone, extreme danger zone. And so I was wondering what the thinking was behind that.
Sure. Thanks, Supervisor Heschek. Really, substation generation is only used during a transmission level impact. And in Willets, we would have a line, we have the substation and the town of Willets, and in between the two is a high-fire-threat district. So were we to generate the the Willet substation, we wouldn't be able to then pass the power through to the community of Willets because it would be going right through the area that we're trying to protect. Again, I want to emphasize that the the work we've done in the past year and really in the past two years to stable stabilize and harden and make more resilient the grid, we don't think the generators are going to be required. I know that that is uncomfortable. It certainly brought me a great deal of comfort last year to think that there was a generator staged at five substations. One, we don't think we're going to need them this year because of the work we've done. And then, again, in Willet specifically, there's sort of a an issue between the sub and the community that prevents us really from being able to use the generator. We could generate the sub, but then we couldn't send the electricity through to the community. I hope that that helps clarify.
Okay. Well, thank you. And and with Supervisor Jordy's question about the fall zone or the tall trees. So is PG&E labeling or ranking transmission line or not the distribution lines according to whether they have tall trees in the area or not?
Well, I'm not certain that we're ranking them, but we use LiDAR technology to fly the lines and determine where these trees are and where we needed to to walk in and figure out where these trees are. And what the the teams at PG&E are putting together now, and I, again, I will absolutely bring this to the Board either individually or at a Board meeting, is showing us precisely which circuits could be impacted. And I just don't have that information yet, but I sure agree with you, and I think I'm picking up what you're putting down there, that we live in a forested community. Where I live outside of Eureka, where you guys are, there's trees everywhere. And at first glance, that slide certainly makes you think, well, shoot, we'd be out of power all the time. That is not the intention nor what the analysis shows. So again, I'm just going to have to ask you guys if you wouldn't mind just giving me a little bit more time to figure out how I can best explain and show where that overstrike criteria is going to have potential impacts. And I don't think it's going to take very long for that. It's just a really new criteria that's been added in the past few weeks, actually.
Okay, thank you. And one last question. And one last question is for the generator rebate program. It certainly seems like there's a lot of people in Mendocino County who might benefit from that. So where do they, where do people get more information on the rebate program?
Sure. My colleague Bobby is putting up on the slide some information about that. The generator rebate program is, there's a whole bunch of links on the website. Again, this is a $300 rebate for eligible customers, 500 for customers who participate in the CARE or Farrah rate programs. You can go to pge.com/backuppower. And I think if you don't mind Supervisor Hachek, I'll take this opportunity to ask Bobby to also go to the battery slide, just for a little bit more detail. Thank you very much. We are offering these portable batteries and the, I'm sorry, folks, I'm peering at the screen trying to figure out what the exact website is, but it is, I think so far, the last time I looked, 143 customers in Mendocino County had received batteries. I'm sure that there is an opportunity for more. So I certainly encourage customers on medical baseline to go to our website and learn more, or go to the California, the CSILC site to learn more about battery backup.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Supervisor McGordy.
Allison, tell us more about the subswitching and how that's going to work. How big are some of these areas in Mendocino County that you'd be able to isolate? Is it a range of sizes, or how is that being determined?
Well, I think you're referring to the sectionalizing. And some of the, I know the four devices that we're putting in this year, I may end up going over to Rich Noonan for help on this, but there are a couple in Covelo, I believe, one in Potter, and one in Power Valley, and, well, I'm sorry about that, possibly one over in the Fort Bragg area. And what they really are doing is, if a community is in, if a, pardon me, if a line, an electric line, is traversing Tier 1, 2, and 3 areas, it used to be you would cut off the power and everyone goes out by installing the sectionalizing device. It's sort of like a circuit breaker, so that you can, you know, maybe if you lose power just to the upstairs of your house, you don't lose it to the downstairs as well. We're gonna, we put in the sectionalizing device so that the folks who aren't really impacted by the weather, they can continue to get power on that line. And then once we hit the high-fire-threat districts, that's where we're going to separate out and only turn off the power in the areas that are going to be impacted by the weather. I don't believe I have a map in this slide, in this presentation that shows where sectionalizing devices are. And Supervisor McGordy, it's not something I have in my head. I'll just check briefly with Rich Noonan if he knows that. I'm not certain he'll have that off the top of his head, though. Rich, are you able to join?
Yeah, hello, can everybody hear me? I think I'm muted.
Yep.
This is Rich Noonan, Senior Public Safety Specialist for Mendocino and Humboldt Counties. The sectionalizing devices themselves are, as Allison said, in high-fire-threat districts, primarily Tier 2, which is elevated, a Tier 3, which is extreme. And what it allows PG&E to do is if there's outage-producing winds that affect that circuit locally, the sectionalizing device will allow power to be de-energized in that area specifically. So it allows PG&E the opportunity to do more targeting where there are outage-producing winds either occurring or that will occur, so that we can mitigate the danger of, you know, fire ignition. Now, as far as knowing exactly, again, off, like Allison said, off the top of her head, where they're located, you know, specifically geographical or latitude longitude locations, I don't have that data. But they are primarily Tier 2 elevated and Tier 3 extreme. And they're in areas where you've got mid-slope or ridge-top type lines that obviously are going to be more affected by wind. And it allows us to be able to de-energize those specific areas to mitigate the fire threat. Did that answer your question?
Yes, so I remember, you know, during some of the PSPS events, that the area around Ukiah and south didn't seem particularly windy, and yet we were in the PSPS, and yet I could go on television and see how the Bay Area was really having very, very high winds and very dry weather. And I just wondered how, you know, how precise the sectionalizing is going to be in the future.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, I interrupted somebody.
Oh, thank you, Rich. I appreciate you weighing in on that. Supervisor McGordy, I think that it's going to become ever better. That sounds a little weird, but the sectionalizing devices really are data-driven. The decisions we make are based on the weather, the circuits, and the tiers. And I believe that as we continue to install more of them, it gets easier for us to break off certain sections of the community. And again, I realize how frustrating it can be if you're in a community that, where the wind's not blowing, and, but the lines that serve you are coming across a high-fire-threat district, all of a sudden you're out of power. So that's what these sectionalizing devices are really going to help with in terms of resiliency and keeping more customers in power.
Thank you, that's good news.
Thank you.
Rich, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Thank you, I did. Supervisor McGordy, and for the rest of the board, 2019 was an odd year, PSPS. A bunch of things occurred, and it was a transmission-level loss that created the public safety power shut-off that occurred almost county-wide. So, and you're right, we didn't have winds here locally. However, our main transmission comes across from the Central Valley. The Mendocino Red Bud 230 kilovolt line comes over. That's the main feed for Mendocino County. We also get some generation off Powder Valley Powerhouse that goes to both Calpella and Ukiah, but it can be rerouted if the need arises. We also get transmission, some of it, for Leggett, Leightonville, and Covelo out of Humboldt County from the generating station there. And then if all of those fail or have outage-producing winds, which is what happened in 2019, the option exists to send power up from Sonoma County from generating facilities at the Geysers. But the Kincaid Fire happened, so that was just kind of, every last option that was available to reroute power was lost during that 2019 event. And impacts were severe, as you'll probably remember. So based on all of that, and the sectionalizing devices that were put in after that event in the 2020, what we had last year, we didn't have any transmission-level effects that occurred where we had, you know, massive widespread loss in the county. And through sectionalizing and rerouting power, we just had the one event that affected 203 customers, I believe it is. So just to kind of piggyback on what Allison was discussing as far as the improvements, the improvements definitely made a big difference last year, and the improvements are ongoing. So none of us have a crystal ball, obviously, and we don't know what the weather's going to do. But I think that PG&E is in a really good position with the modifications that have been made to the system through sectionalizing devices, the enhanced vegetation management, to really lower and lessen the impact of public safety power shut-off. I just wanted to get that in there.
Yeah, thank you. That's really, really good explanation I've never heard before, and it makes perfect sense. And, you know, we suffered mightily locally here because we were on well, so having no water really turns into a big problem. So we had to take extra steps to be sure that we had, you know, water for basic health and human safety, but it was quite an event. So I'm glad to hear that you're addressing it and you're trying to make things better so that we don't have such a serious loss of service.
Okay, do we have other questions or comments from supervisors? Not saying, do we have any public comments on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay. Great, well, thank you, Allison, for the update. And we probably, you'll probably be hearing from us individually just to get a little more follow-up on some items that may be related more to our specific communities. But we do appreciate the update and appreciate the clearance that we've all seen PG&E and their subcontractors create around the power lines.
Thank you, Chair Jordy, and thank you to the board. Again, I'm really sorry I had the techno difficulties. I, you know, put on makeup and everything for you guys, so I apologize. But thank you for having us, and I look forward to an opportunity to talk more about this and see how the year unfolds. I hope everybody stays safe. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it's 10:40, I think it might be a good time to take a break, and let's try to be back here five minutes before 11 o'clock. We go back to reports from supervisors and just announce that we have a special, I'm not sure if it's a special meeting, but another meeting added to our calendar specifically to hear the cannabis cultivation and facilities or, I guess it's just cultivation ordinance, and that is going to be on June 2nd, Wednesday, June 2nd. So Clerk LeBart's office according with supervisors to find an available day and June 2nd is available, so we are going to schedule that meeting for June 2nd. All right, now we can go on to item 5B, which is discussion impossible action including acceptance of Chief Executive Officer's summary and acceptance of presentation by Potter Valley Volunteer Fire Department, Red Valley Community Water District and Book Trails Fire Department and Little Lake Fire Protection District regarding projects for strategically investing one-time Pacific Gas Electric Disaster Settlement Funds. Looking to the CEO's office to start this off.
Good morning Chair Jodi, members of the board, Darcy Antle, Deputy CEO. This morning, we are going to pull up our slide deck, I believe, there we go. So to start with the first slide, we have the North Bay PG&E fire projects. These are the projects that we have been able to identify that the other regions have spent and where they've spent their money in various areas throughout, and you can see down at the bottom to be determined, that's $179 million, and that includes the Mendocino County money that we've been discussing the last three sessions since March 9th, I believe was our first session. The next slide is just a general summary of all the departments and agencies that have come forth requesting funds for a total of 37 million out of our 22. I do want to point out a couple of items were removed from the PG&E ask by the county of Mendocino, that would be the Whitmore Roof, and it would also be the ag crane truck discussed at last session. So today, what we would like to do, we have three presenters, we've also attached for your discussion, your PG&E rating matrix. So at this time, yes, we are going to start with Potter Valley Fire Department, Chief Bill Pauley. We can hear you now, thank you.
Good morning everyone and thank you very much. I believe you all have the letter that was submitted on behalf of Potter Valley Fire on our Potter Valley Community Services District, which outlines the steps and the issues that we've dealt with since the fire, since the free fires and the smaller fires over the last four years, three years. I think that it's fairly straightforward and I'd like to make just a couple of comments above and beyond that. We very carefully reviewed all of the events and the evacuation orders following the various events in order to try to really learn what we had done really correctly and what we had not done as well. And we did that really in two parts between not only our department, but the other departments, the Office of Emergency Services, the Sheriff Department, CAL FIRE, all of the agencies collectively spent a lot of time over the last few years reviewing the various events and how we could better coordinate and better prepare, and what our various weaknesses and weeks were, and obviously you heard Brent earlier today trying to deal with the communications piece of it. And we spent a lot of time not only about the fires, but about other major events and what we needed to do to enhance our performance and what our weaknesses and strengths were. And following that, our board and our department, and to some extent in conjunction with Redwood Valley and the other departments, Ukiah Valley and Hopland particularly in the zone too, we talked about planning and implementation and how we could better utilize our resources, but how we could be prepared. And so we talked about communications, both amongst ourselves, but with the community and the public, notifications, evacuations, safety zones, preparedness, those type of things. We also talked a lot about logistics, logistics of our equipment and how effective and efficient our equipment was, about our outdated equipment and what type of newer equipment we needed and how we would have the type of things we needed. And specifically for Potter Valley, we focused on water and water supply, recognizing we do not have any hydrant system whatsoever, but we also do have the reservoirs and the irrigation district which can be, if utilized properly, a real strength. We talked about training and training the firefighters and personnel. We also did planning on what type of events we might have to deal with in the future, everything from mass casualty, shooting, bus accidents, chemical accidents, all kinds of things so that in theory we'd be better prepared in thinking about the type of activities we might be facing. We looked a lot at the big picture, but a lot at the little picture, what are the little things that were really important, not only to the department, but to the people within the community, and how we interact with the community and with other agencies. So following that, we put together a plan which we've been implementing over the last three years in terms of upgrades, and those are listed on the letter that I gave to you. Some of them have been completed and we feel very good about, there's still more that needs to be done, and hopefully if we can receive some funding from the PG&E money, we'll be able to complete those activities. I'd be happy to take any questions as it relates to our letter or our request, thank you.
Thank you Chief Pauley for being on, so one of the things I wanted to discuss with you, I think we once talked about briefly, was a siren warning system in Potter Valley and what your community feels about that.
Thank you very much. We have had a siren in Potter Valley since the 1960s. Initially, it was used for two things or two purposes, one, back in that timeframe, the department was dispatched through the fire siren system with a series of lengths of tones and number of sirens, so you knew where the fires were, that was really pre any torque of radios that were available, which then of course we developed the phone system and then went to radios and pagers. But initially, we had the siren from the early 60s, and it's actually amounted on a wind machine tower base at the fire station. We use it periodically through the years for major events of various forms and for other type of events such as the Memorial Day Parade or those kind of things. We are really concerned about how and when to use the siren system, like on the fires, on the October 10th fire, the problem was, one, the winds and whether people could have heard it, and two, there was so much fire and ball of fire and so many limbs and trees down, the roads were inaccessible, if we had blown the siren, where would people go? Would we have created more confusion or less confusion? And we made the decision almost immediately to not use the siren that night. We've had a lot of discussions both with the Office of Emergency Services as they've been discussing the siren system for the county and for the different departments, but at this point, we think there's an awful lot of questions to be raised in terms of, under what circumstances would you blow the siren, how would you communicate to people with the siren, what the event was, and where they need to evacuate to, and the direction they would need to go to a safety zone. And that is a real, real challenge. I think the NICSIL system, which was talked about earlier by Brent, may be as effective, assuming people will use it and listen to it, because it's very, very timely in terms of the type of event and what the circumstances of the event are versus the siren, yes, they hear the siren, and maybe the siren could be blown to tell you, you know, listen to your TV if you're can, listen to your cellphone, you know, there's a major event, you need to be aware of something is happening. But after that, it's hard to communicate effectively what it is they need to do. What if it's a flooding event? What if it's some sort of a toxic or chemical event? You know, when do you blow it and what does it mean? And so while we have a siren, and it's in good working order and covers the valley floor adequately, because our valley is more compacted than what Redwood Valley Valleys is, all of the people in the outline areas, it would be harder to communicate, and particularly over on the Eel River side of our district.
Do you feel that you have adequate cell coverage for NICSIL to work?
We certainly have with the recent tower that was installed on the Eel River Hartstone property this past three or four months, that the cell phone coverage is much, much, much improved, but there are still areas, specifically in the Potter Valley Road off Highway 20 into the valley, which is certainly an area for fire, which is not completely adequate. Parts of Highway 20 are inadequate and adequate, and then once you start up the county road from Eel River and the old mill site, it's very, very spotty, clear to the county line. So there are clearly areas that the cell phones don't work, but in those areas, it would also be very difficult from the people we've talked to in terms of how many sirens we would need to implement and whether they would be effective or ineffective in terms of adequate coverage depending on the wind and the weather, and then potentially some power issues in terms of locating them where there was at least power, electric power somewhat close by so we didn't have tremendous costs related to bringing power into where they would be placed.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief Pauley, I'm not seeing additional questions at this time, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Darcy Antle, Deputy CEO, at this time, we will go to Redwood Valley Water District, and I believe we have Mr. Tom Shoneman on the phone. Hi, we can hear you, please proceed.
Terrific, thank you for the opportunity you guys, I appreciate it. And I was on earlier and I appreciate Supervisor McGordy's comments about Redwood Valley and the fact that we're still in sort of a funk because of that terrible fire that came through, and that's one of the reasons I'd like to, we're asking for, first off, for our water district which is broke, we've put off a lot of maintenance because of money issues. This is a fantastic opportunity for us, and I really, I feel that Redwood Valley Fire and Water should certainly be pinpointed for a lot of this money, it happened here. But we have, we need some pumps out on the lake, last year, Mary Camp and the tribes replaced one of our turbines out our turbines out there at a cost of $100,000, and she was never really thanked, and the tribes for, that saved our butts. And we still have two more out there that need to be done. If you open the doors to those panels, it's dripping with water, it's a mess, it has to be taken care of. Our fire hydrant locks, with this cannabis problem, we've got fire, we've got water trucks running all over this damn valley, and some are pulling water out of our hydrants, which is only supplied by our reservoir. That is, we're not getting lake water anymore, so these guys are pulling water out of our system that needs to be used in case of a fire.
Sorry, Tom, I want to make sure you know that Supervisor Williams has a question or comment.
I'm sorry.
Sir, I don't want to get off topic here, but can you tell us, or can you submit to Code Enforcement who those water trucks are?
Well, there, a lot of them are unlisted. There are some in the valley here and then from outside the valley. But we know that some are pulling water out of our hydrants, which is illegal, since there is no ag water available to anybody. You can't put a water truck up to those hydrants now. So, what we're trying to do is get the word out to people to call the sheriffs if they see a truck backed up to one of our hydrants. There are no permits for using any of our water out of those hydrants.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, we're helping you get the word out.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Again, we've got a lot of deferred maintenance out at our water treatment plant. We're limping this stuff along. We have a communication system without having to send a guy out to the lake to get those pumps fired up. We're trying to get a satellite system installed so that that can be done from the plant directly out to those pumps I was referring to before. And then, our water meter replacements. We've got guys that have to go through, and with all the cannabis, we've got guys that have to trudge through brush to get to a meter. This meter replacement would be an electronic gig where he can drive up and just simply read it on his smartphone device or whatever. But it would ultimately save money and maybe dangerous situations. That's about, that's about all I've got. I just wanted to emphasize these things, and I appreciate you guys listening to me.
Tom, I want to make sure that you heard some of the earlier discussions. So, Supervisor McGordy and Supervisor Hashack are serving on an ad hoc committee, looking at trying to get all of the water districts to be aware of future drought dollars that we believe are going to be available through the state, perhaps even the federal government. And so, just want to make sure you're aware of that and communicate with Supervisor McGordy and Supervisor Hashack about that, because, you know, we obviously will have, we have already more requests than we have PG&E funds available, and obviously, we have to fund as much as we can with the PG&E dollars, but we also want to, you know, access any drought dollars we have for projects, and it sounds like at least a few of these might be eligible. So, I just want to make sure you work with them as much as you can.
Absolutely, Supervisor. I've got Senator McGuire's ear on a project that I'd like to try to get off the ground. I'm getting a lot of people that say, no, this can't be done, and all these reasons why we can't, but we have to think outside the box now. And the senator was clear, there's some money out there. He needs, as you guys have put it, shovel-ready projects, and he's willing to listen to running a pipeline down the railroad tracks. The railroad hiking trail is something close to his heart. And he perked up when we started talking about running some water lines down those tracks, and he needs more information. So, yeah, we're aware that we've got, and I'm trying to get people to think outside the box on this stuff. This is a new reality. This is the way it's going to be. And we've got to obtain a sustainable, clean source of water for this valley. And as the senator put it, he wanted to let me know, we're the poster child for water problems. And I said, yeah, we're aware of that. So, we got his ear, and that's what we're working on right now. But I appreciate, there are a lot of federal money out there that we have to try to collect. And Mary Camp from the tribes is a fantastic grant writer. She's on board with this. So, yeah, we're going to try to find some money, but we'd like to get a chunk of this money.
Sure. Thank you, Supervisor Williams.
Yeah, I appreciate the presentation. What more can we do to support enforcement over this water theft? Are there photos of the trucks, license plates, DOT numbers? How do we follow up? Do we refer it to the sheriff, to CHP?
Are you asking me?
Well, I'm asking you, and I'm asking my colleagues.
Okay.
I hear these complaints often, and I feel like we need some concrete next steps. And I appreciate that you're putting locks on, but I'm also dismayed that during a drought, people are willing to steal water.
Well, it's been going on for a while, and Redwood Valley is the wild, wild west of cannabis grows right now. And so, there's no, it's no secret to me where this water's going. And I'm afraid, I got to say that some of these growers don't give a damn about our pond that's going to supply the water to put fires out. I think that's on their agenda. Now, legally, it's really up in the air. I mean, we've gotten all sorts of different, you know, the sheriff's, sheriff had said he'd like to, he'd like to say this is a felony. Well, nobody, you know, for a water truck full of water, I don't know how far we're going to get on stiff penalties. But I've heard that other districts have banned water trucks, you know, that are pulling water out of their district, they ban them from coming into the limits. But these are all, I'm not an expert on the law enforcement part of this, or the legal part of this, but it's disheartening to see water trucks running around here when we don't have any water.
Sir, you see this on a daily basis?
Yes.
So, for the board, I think a referral is appropriate. Is it to Code Enforcement, to the cannabis unit? We need some sort of follow-up. It's not right to have the water district take on this burden.
Supervisor, I agree. We do have our Code Enforcement discussion later this afternoon. Hopefully, we can get some answers then. Supervisor McGordy?
Well, yeah, I was just going to talk about that and then just say that, you know, another thing that we can do is essentially things like wildlife cameras that are focused on some of the places where they're likely to be diverted, so we get photo evidence. And both the Highway Patrol and the Sheriff's Office, I think, are happy to enforce these regulations if they know about where they're happening. So, that's kind of the next step on that. So, and I just want to voice support for the Redwood Valley County Water District. They obviously have a lot of needs. I think that with the monies being allocated for the drought response, we should be able to take care of their needs through that rather than through PG&E. But it's really important that they have really good descriptions and shovel-ready kind of information about what needs doing. The pipeline project is intriguing, but that's going to involve also working through some of our local processes such as LAFKA, which could prove to be quite difficult, but certainly worth pursuing.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor. All right, well, thank you, Tom Shoneman from the Redwood Valley Water District, and I think we'll go on to our next presentation.
I appreciate it.
Darcy Antle, Deputy CEO. At this time, I believe we are going to Chief Neuer from the Brook Trails Fire Department, including Little Lake.
Good morning, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to present. I'm John Neuer, Fire Chief of the Brook Trails Fire Department, also representing the Little Lake Fire District. Even though the fire did not occur in our jurisdiction, it did, however, impact Little Lake's Fire District by breaching Mariposa Creek and parts of Pine Mountain. We have a very robust auto and mutual aid agreement between the two agencies, and with our oak incident, we've identified some shortcomings that we feel we could address. And some of that is, during the evacuations, roads tend to get clogged. We have very narrow mountainous roads in both jurisdictions. And having a side-by-side utility, the one that we're asking for is a four-door enclosed cab, has water and foam and patient transport capabilities, we feel that that would be a tremendous use in not only evacuations during fires, but recreational rescues, logging accidents, snow events, small fires that we can't get to with traditional apparatus, and the ability to move people and equipment into some of these remote areas. In addition to all that, we would also be able to provide these units on a mutual aid basis to other areas of the county. So, this time, short and sweet, but I'd be willing to entertain any questions that anybody may have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Hashack?
I'd just like to thank Chief Neuer for presenting this on behalf of both Brook Trails and Little Lake Fire Departments today. And it was my understanding, too, that Little Lake and Brook Trails, well, you especially, were fighting a fire from that 2017 fire that had crossed 101 and was in danger of getting down into the Golden Rule and that valley. Is that correct?
Yes, we actually, Brook Trails, myself and other firefighters self-dispatched to the Golden Rule and started to evacuate with others that were there and tried to hold an unrealistic line at the highway. But yes, we did, and we also had equipment assigned to that fire for several weeks.
So, that was all part of the mutual aid agreement?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Chief Neuer. We have your request, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Darcy Antle, Deputy CEO. That's the last presentation from agencies that we have today. So, if you would like, at this point, we can go to the PG&E Funding Rating Matrix, and you can have a discussion there. If I may, I would like to point out a couple of items on the matrix. One was the one-time funding request. I've attempted with my team to determine if it's a one-time fund or if we expect it to be an ongoing annual cost, and that would be in the first column after the agency and department description. And then, in the last column, we have put payer of last resort as a request of this board. And that, I can help determine if it's a county ask or from one of our county departments. It's a little harder for me and the team to determine from an outside agency's perspective, unless it's an agency that we are working with to attain a grant, such as the Redwood Valley Sirens. The PERM, the Prevention Resiliency Recovery Mitigation Team of the county, has been working with the Redwood Valley Fire District regarding sirens. At this point, it's an HMGp grant. They take a while to go through all the regulations, but we have received feedback and questions from CAL OES, so we expect it to be approved soon. It's for $172,000, up to four sirens. The match for the fire district would be $20,000. There would be a $23,000 in-kind match on behalf of the county, and we would be doing that in-kind services. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention. There's a couple of others that I know we're working on grants with, but as far as an outside agency, as Coastal Valleys, for example, I wouldn't be able to tell you what other funding sources they would have available. So, I just wanted to point that out to you, and assume you'll have a discussion regarding the sheet, so we can further develop it for you.
Okay, thanks, Darcy. First, you want to go to Supervisor McGordy, then Supervisor Hashack?
So, Darcy, have you had a chance to look through the Redwood Valley Recovery Plan and see where we're at in terms of progress? Because I see that as kind of a priority if our PG&E funds match for things that we've identified in the plan that we consider to be, you know, high priority? So, if that, have you had a chance?
If I may, through the chair, the Redwood Valley Complex Recovery Plan has been presented each time that the Prevention Resiliency Recovery and Mitigation Team has presented. So, every time we've reviewed that plan, the first time we brought this forward on March 9th, I believe it was, that plan was attached, and the items were discussed and brought forward that had not been worked on and that we had felt needed attention. In the meeting last time we presented, which was just a week ago, we brought forward the plan as well. And in that plan, we had highlighted asterisk, the items that were included in the recovery plan. So, I believe you have those documents from prior meetings.
Thank you. And if someone is in the call but not speaking, if they could mute their microphone, I think we're picking up some other feedback. Supervisor Williams?
I didn't have a comment, but maybe the clerk could mute Bill Pauli.
Thank you. So, I think the matrix is a good working document for us to go through the projects and score them. And again, we're not obligated to take that information and strictly fund projects based on their scoring, but at least it will give us, I think, some basic understanding of ways to separate the projects, or at least understand them better. And then, also, on that point of funder of last resort, it seems to me that we could have a situation where we think that here are some really high priority projects, but that may well be funded all or in part from grants. And if they are, then their funding would be freed up and could go to the next highest-ranked projects. So, just want to put that out there, that I think, you know, we're obviously hopeful some of these projects will be funded all or in part from other sources, but it's too early perhaps to know if that'll be the case with some of these projects. And I do want to thank Darcy and the recovery team for all the grants that they've helped coordinate to help with projects throughout the county in the recent years since these disasters. So, not every, there would be many more projects on this wishlist if they had not done that work. Supervisor Hashack?
Thank you, Chair Jordy. I guess, well, I want to thank Deputy CEO Antle for helping create this matrix and adding in the columns that we talked about last meeting. And I think it provides a good framework for what we're looking at. I guess, my question to the board is, when we do this, because we'll all do it separately and then bring it together and give it to the Deputy CEO Antle's office to kind of go put together, is that, do we want to just put a check or a one, or yes, or a no? You know, how do we do it? Do we just want to do a one and then add them all up at the end? Or what would be the way to rank these? You know, we put a dot in there and count up the number of dots we have? Or do we want to scale it like a two, one, zero? So, just a process question.
You know, my own preference would be, we would give, if it's a yes or no question, that's clear. And in others, there could be a sliding scale point system.
But, well, if we have some that are sliding scale and others that are just yes But, well, if we have some that are sliding scale and others that are just yes or no, then it might be hard to tabulate the whole, you know, all together.
Well, the yes or no is we could simply give a number to that yes. Supervisor McGordy?
I'm sorry, I think we could determine that right now. So kind of looking across the top and set it up. And then I, I think it's also worth having some sort of just a preference rate if we ask the board to say, give us your top five that you think are most worth doing. I'm all for occasionally throwing some emotional evaluation as well, just things that we personally feel strongly about or for various reasons, even if they don't necessarily, you know, get a numerical evaluation that's a winner.
So Supervisor McGordy, you're suggesting that in addition to this chart, each supervisor would say, give us your five highest priority projects?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. That works for me. Supervisor Heschek?
Well, like the evaluation process, we could do, like, for the first column, is it a reimbursement to the county for disaster-related expenses? And that could be a one or zero, right?
Yes.
But when we go over towards the end, does the funding align with the fire recovery work plan? And that's really those crucial projects that were directly related from the fire and have to do with the, those affected areas, Redwood Valley and Potter Valley. And if it's part of that, we could give it a four or a three, you know, a greater weight, and that might help us to differentiate with the scoring.
You know, I think that's exactly right, and I think we should take the time right now just to go through the columns and just say, let's give them a number and weigh them right now so that we have something to work with, so that this, that task is out of the way. I think that's a very good way of doing it.
Yeah, I would agree. So should we just do that?
Yes, I think so, if it's okay with everybody else. You're dirty.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, so I'm having a little trouble reading everything, so. Much better. Okay, yeah. Supervisor Heschek, you take the lead on this.
Okay, so number one, is it a reimbursement to the county for disaster-related expenses? Are we all right with a one or a zero? Okay? Not hearing a problem with that? That will be a one. Will it better prepare county for future fire disasters? One?
Well, you know, we do have on top, I just noticed this, it says a weighted value of one through 10, one being the lowest, 10 being the highest, maximum score of 10.
Okay.
What if we just go with that one to 10? Seems like this was already thought out.
Yeah, it seems like it does. I, you know, I'm not sure, of course, it still becomes, it still becomes a kind of a judgment call on some of these, I suppose.
Well, yeah, the problem with this could be that we don't know enough to give it a five or a seven or, you know, it might be easier for us to give it a one or a zero. And if we went over to the, does the funding align with fire recovery work plan, we might want to give that a two or a 20 points possible.
Well, you know, there's a nice uniformity with going from one to 10. I mean, that makes it pretty easy, and I think it is kind of a judgment call, so I, but 10 being, it's like a whole lot that is really going to make a big difference, and one being, no, it's not really going to make that much difference. And I think, as I think about it, I'm okay with that. So certainly something like, will it prepare, better prepare county for future fire disasters, for instance, that's. So that, some of these things are going to be very much specific to certain areas like Potter Valley and Redwood Valley, so they may score low on that. Whereas Supervisor Williams' idea of having a training facility would be something that would score high on that. So I'm not sure whether these should be weighted or not, I guess is what I'm asking you.
Well, let me put one out there. If the last column, which is off-screen on my screen at the moment, but it has to do with, I believe the last column is whether or not it was in the fire recovery plan. Or, yeah, does the funding align with the public safety work plan? Perhaps that question could be weighted to one through 20, and that would get us to a maximum score of 100 points. Supervisor Heschek?
Now, the public safety work plan is different than the fire recovery work plan, and the fire recovery work plan is really specific to Redwood Valley and Potter Valley. Is that correct?
Darcy Antle, Deputy CEO, yes. The recovery work plan is from the 2017 fire, and that was created with the disaster recovery team at the time, having open-form meetings out at Redwood Valley MAC and other areas, input on those projects. The public safety work plan is a county-wide plan that the disaster recovery team is working on as well.
Okay, so how about if we gave this 15 possible for the fire recovery work plan and for the public safety work plan 15? That would get us up to 100, and it will weight them a little more.
That certainly works for me. Any other feedback? Do we have three supervisors who feel that that works? 15 points for the public safety work plan, 15 points maximum for the fire recovery work plan? Supervisor McGordy?
I'm just saying, yeah, it works for me.
Okay. Okay, Darcy, I think we may have an agreement on the scoring sheet.
So again, Darcy Antle, Deputy CEO, just to clarify, the first, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven are going to be ranked in a one-to-10 score, and the last two are possible at 15, not 10. Correct?
Yes.
Well, the last two being the fire recovery work plan and the public safety work plan.
Correct.
Not the payer of last resort.
Understood.
Okay, so, and for the payer of last resort, what, how will we know that? What's going to be the basis of us knowing who the payer of last resort is?
If you're asking me, Darcy Antle, Deputy CEO, as mentioned prior, I can only help determine that with any of the county asks and/or some of the agencies of which we are working with, where I may know that we already have a grant in progress. Some of the items, let's say, for example, community chipper program, I know that the county is working on a grant with Mendocino County Fire Council. So in that case, I could put grant in there because I know we're working on an item there. The others, such as Supervisor Williams' fire structure, I would not know if this is the payer of last resort. There would be nothing for me to be able to make those determinations. So it may be that you rank them all, and then we start looking at the payer of last resort and making a few calls at that time after your ranking. Just an idea, I don't really know how to solve that. CEO Angelo would like to make a couple of remarks.
Thank you, Darcy, Chair Jordy. I think it's a very good question and one that I think that Darcy's talked about as far as our funding, but what we could do is, we could certainly follow up with our state and federal partners, which I know that Darcy had planned on, but just so the board knows, we can follow up and see if there's something we're missing as far as other funding streams by some of these community requests. The other option, I guess, as well, is we ask a couple additional questions of those that are submitting as far as, it's almost an honor system, do you know of any other funding? I think if they had other funding, they wouldn't be coming to us. So we could work with that. Once the board determines what the priorities are in the projects, we can look into it further to see if there is anything that we're missing as far as either state and federal dollars or any type of foundation dollars. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Williams?
I don't think supervisors can rank payer of last resort. I mean, it's just subjective, maybe there are state dollars, but they're not being applied. So is the state the payer of last resort, or is the county general fund or the PG&E settlement?
Chair Jordy, through the chair, the county general fund is always the payer of last resort. It's not negotiable, and it's always the payer of last resort. So I think what you're saying is that depending on what funding we're looking at, if it was PG&E funding, that would be the payer of last resort. If we were looking at the American Rescue Funds after July, that would be payer of last resort. So I think we can, we certainly can use that as a marker. Thank you.
I'm saying I think it's nonsensical for supervisors to rank payer of last resort. I think maybe this is a column for staff.
Yeah, we can do that. We can rank it and let you know. And we can explain it too, if there's any question where a board member may think that that it's not payer of last resort, we can work on that.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and I think also that the payer of last resort in some respects is a bit of a tiebreaker, but also we, everything that, we have to really stint you with our money here in, from the perspective that if there's other way of leveraging other funds, we'd want to do that. So that's something that we would need some help, obviously, from staff to determine. I agree with Supervisor Williams, it's very difficult for us to know the answer to the question.
So how about we do this, the question payer of last resort, when we submit our scoring to staff, we can list it or not, but what we, in most cases, it would be a guess by each supervisor. And so maybe we ask staff to bring back our scores absent that payer of last resort if, in the event that supervisors made a guess, because at this point, it most likely would be a guess. And so really, there'd be a maximum score of 90 in the first questions, knowing that we're going to have more of a group deliberation on the question of payer of last resort with staff after we've scored and evaluated all the projects. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, right, thanks. So, okay, so I think we have a good working document. And again, I believe we agreed at our last meeting that June 1st would be the deadline for people to, or I guess, May 30th would be the deadline for people to submit their projects to the county, and that we will be squirting these projects individually before coming back as a group to discuss and slot projects. Do we have any staff comments before we go to public comments on this?
Chair Jordy, CEO Angelo, the timeframe that you've listed is for submissions, as I understand it. As far as when the board would make a, I don't know that, I don't know that this, I may have missed something and the board may have talked about it, but I'm thinking that the actual decisions, the final decisions from this board on this money would come after June, so July, August. I mean, the money's there, you're going to put out the money to those that have requested that you've prioritized, but if we could get the budget adopted in June and then finalize the PG&E money after that, and then start on the American Rescue Funds, I think that would work for the millions of dollars that we're dealing with that staff have to, it's the same staff working on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor McGordy?
No, I like that plan. I think that's a good way to go. We don't want to rush this, and we don't want to overload staff, and we want to have thoughtful deliberations, so I suggest that we take a little time and make sure we really, really understand the proposals and do a good thorough evaluation.
Okay, all right. Well, I think we have a good timeframe here. If that concludes staff comments and board comments at this point, maybe we can go to public comments.
There are no public comments on this item.
Okay. Do we need any more direction at this time on this item?
Darcy Antle, Deputy CEO, no, I believe we're good to move forward. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, we were behind schedule, now we're ahead of schedule. So at 11:45, we can adjourn, and then we're going to take a 30-minute lunch break and come back at 12:15, if that works for everyone. And then we can go into the cannabis code enforcement item at 12:15. Does that work for everyone?
It does for staff. Thank you.
Okay, right, thank you. Come back at 12:15. Thank you.
Acceptance of a presentation and direction of staff regarding implementation and execution of enhanced cannabis enforcement plan and streamlined process to align all parties, including code enforcement, the cannabis program, the Mendocino County Sheriff's Office, and the county council together. And to start this off, we're going to go first to planning and building services.
Good afternoon, Chair Gerardi, members of the board, Nash Consulace interim director for planning and building services. So I'm going to go ahead and introduce this item. And so per the board's direction, staff from planning and building services, including code enforcement, the cannabis program, county council, and the sheriff's department have examined the board's direction for the establishment of an enhanced code enforcement program and a streamlined process to align all parties involved. Specifically, the board directed that staff look at the Humboldt County model and come back to the board with a plan that incorporates core features of the Humboldt County's enforcement structure. Over the course of the last month, staff from PBS, county council, cannabis program, and the sheriff's department have been meeting to develop a plan addressing the board's direction. Staff has prepared a presentation that includes background, current tools, and an outline of the long-term strategic plan for code enforcement, including the reorganization of code enforcement and the proposal for the program going forward based on the board's direction. And at the end, we will be available for one, board direction, and two, answer any questions. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to John Burks, code enforcement supervisor, who will go through the presentation. And then upon the conclusion, staff members from cannabis, PBS, county council, and the sheriff's department will be available to answer any questions. So, John?
Thank you, Chair, Board, CEO, and community. This is John Burks, the code enforcement supervisor. Hopefully, you're able to see our PowerPoint presentation. I will be taking us through that now. So as we got the agencies together and begin to investigate and study how Humboldt County models their enforcement, we came up with some core features that really define their success, in our opinion. A apples-to-apples sort of transition from the Mendocino County model to Humboldt didn't measure up for a few different reasons, but we identified these as being the primary features that we feel would ultimately lead us to a successful path. And that would be deterrent penalties and tools, which we've already been working on and the board did give some direction on. Inter-agency collaboration, which we certainly have now, but would be expanding on that in sort of a meaningful way, which we'll describe. A long-term strategic plan that really outlines the various stages of how to bring this program up to speed, knowing that we have some resource limitations to start. Hopefully, we'll address those in one of the other core features, which is resourcing this appropriately. We do know that Humboldt County, based on our research, did start out with a pretty significant staffing up, also acquiring the satellite imagery contract and several things. And they kind of rolled that out in two stages, which I imagine would also be effective here. So you can see on this slide to the left is how we operate now. We're primarily complaint-driven in code enforcement specifically, as well as the cannabis unit at the moment. Code enforcement manages the complaint hub and the cannabis department monitors in-site, or I'm sorry, in-program site performance. We feel like the proactive feature that Humboldt uses is described pretty well on the right and how we would implement it in some regards. So we would, again, bolster the collaborative directed enforcement aided by satellite imagery. We'll continue to maintain the current complaint hub while folding in directed enforcement through the various stages as we begin to roll this out. And then there's some built-in benefits to having that imagery for the cannabis department, along with many other county departments, but particularly as the board gave direction for the cannabis department to house the imagery, they'll immediately have some benefits as it's a major time saver, we feel. So how we envision this coming together is not far off of what we're already doing. We do communicate fairly regularly amongst the agencies you see represented here. We would just incorporate a few features. So code enforcement would again manage the central communication hub while working with the sheriff's department and the cannabis department. We feel that it would be best if the sheriff's department monitored all the incoming complaints and the proactive targets to make sure that they're addressing, or at least cautioning us as we move forward in any of our campaigns about criminal activity, drug trafficking organizations. And they would be able to give some specific direction on how the proactive targeting would interact with their efforts to currently abate cannabis. And then any of the complaints received in the hub that involve in-program sites would be managed by the cannabis department. How that would look on the ground, we'll get to that in a later slide. Also, again, going back to the cannabis department managing the imagery subscription, you can see it represented in the bottom-left corner down there. So this is just a rough flow chart of how we imagine this will go, again, using some of the strategies already in place. So the directed enforcement and the complaints would go into the hub to be monitored by the sheriff initially, and then after a period of time for them to review it for safety purposes, it would move into sort of one of the other two categories. So the in-program cultivation sites would be subject to a review by the cannabis department, most likely contacted via some sort of notice. And then depending on if they're able to achieve compliance or not, they would just fold back into sort of a normal in-process stage in the cannabis program. If they're non-responsive, if there's no effort for site remediation, things like that, there would potentially be a denial letter and a referral to code enforcement and the sheriff's office. Those questions probably would be best for the cannabis program when we get to the question answers portion. I don't want to speak too much on their behalf, though I do feel like I have a pretty good understanding of ultimately how this will work. Now, if you look at the left column there for the illegal cultivation side, there would be also a review in participation with the cannabis department as they house the imagery of what's actually happening on the ground. Code enforcement would issue an initial contact via letter or notice in the hopes that there would be a very short window or correction period. You know, I think that Humboldt may refer to those as abatement letter style of enforcement, putting them on notice that we've identified these violations and give them a chance to abate the illegal cultivation and get into some form of compliance with the infrastructure and hopefully get on track to remediate the environmental damages if there are any, and code enforcement would assist them in doing so. However, if we're not able to achieve some sort of compliance in that notification window, we would move into some of the other tools, one of which would be an administrative citation. And if that is not effective, a comment referral, or we could take the path of criminal or civil court action, which is something we can do now. But again, we just wanted to represent that in sort of a flow chart. So one of the core features, of course, is the deterrent penalties. The board adopted earlier this year recommendations made by county council and planning and building services that we thought would be a better deterrent, increasing the penalty amounts and cleaning up some of the practices that we have to streamline them and become more in line with how the state has set it up with their changes in the laws most recently. So just a quick overview, and I don't like doing too many numbers in this setting only because it can be a bit confusing, but I'll just give you a general idea of what that looks like currently. So based on the direction and the change to the ordinance earlier this year, violations of the Mendocino County cannabis cultivation ordinance may result in daily penalties of up to $10,000 if not corrected. Additionally, a one-time and/or recurring penalty may be assessed of up to $400 per illegally cultivated cannabis plant if not abated. Cannabis infrastructure and environmental violations may result in daily penalties of up to $2,500 for each violation if not corrected. We're already having some very positive results due to this increase. So out of 111 cannabis complaints, a handful of which are still under investigation, we've only issued two citations so far. Humboldt mentioned in their presentation from the previous board meeting that they had no penalties in 2020 as a result of being able to gain compliance. So I feel, and staff feels, that once the word gets out that there's these heavier penalties in place, compliance becomes a lot easier to achieve. And so far, we're actually seeing that represented in real time right now. So we're hoping to take that same sort of positive result into a proactive situation if the board directs it. So when we talk about tools that we have, and it's not, these aren't specific to code enforcement, it's for a lot of other county entities, but specifically used by code enforcement in this particular situation, is the notice of violation, administrative citation where penalties are assessed, property liens, abatement orders, civil court actions through county council, and then penalty collections. So really, what we're hoping to add, other than staffing resources, in terms of tools, is the tax assessment on illegal cannabis infrastructure, which we're already working on and have in place. That will be moving forward. And then the satellite imagery for evidence collection, which clearly has benefits, I'm sure you're familiar with. So I've learned a lot in my conversations with Humboldt and how they intended to move forward with their long-term strategic plans. So when we got together in the multi-agency meetings, we felt that this would be an appropriate way to stage out the rollout of this idea. The unknowns are if we are able to get more staff, the timeline that it takes to bring them in, to get them trained, to bring them up to speed with all the job-related functions. So there's some unknowns. We can't really put it on a genuine timeline, say, year one, year two, year three, because we don't know when we'll accomplish these various items on here. However, we do feel this would be an effective way to use the current resources to get started and then bring in new elements. So in stage one, it's mostly about recruiting and hiring, and then begin the initial contact letters. In stage two, there will be the training of the new personnel, including adding in some proactive targets in the initial intake, so to begin to roll that out. In stage three, we can then hopefully have some of those vacancies filled and begin to prioritize proactive targets. And then in stage four, hopefully be full staff, assuming that we're able to fill all of those positions. We're hoping that we will be able to do so. And then based on the board direction, target all sites based on scale, environmental impact, and then individuals or people or groups who own multiple illegal cultivation locations. And then stage five is the overview, where we can take an inventory of planned success and adjust resources and direction. and adjust resources and direction accordingly based on how this all went. So again, going back to resources, I'll get a little bit into the organizational structure, but we find that incorporating all of the elements you see here on the screen are going to be absolutely vital. And we've had a lot of really good conversations about how we can link up, share information, and become really effective with this enforcement ecosystem. Oh, and the supporting agencies would be CDFW, Water Resources Board, any of the state agencies. We want to keep them informed of our activities and work together. So this is the current code enforcement structure as it is today. There's actually two bits of board direction that we'll be discussing in the next few slides here. So currently, we have our division manager, who's a contractor. I believe that contract is good through 2023, but it's not a position on the allocation table yet. Right now, there's a code enforcement officer two, who's the acting supervisor and is the only administrator of the unit and manages all the functions of the unit. It's probably not the best structure we felt in our review of the unit, but we'll get into that in just a second. And then all of the positions you see here, we have one code enforcement officer, one for the coast, two for inland for non-cannabis reactive complaints. And then we have two cannabis code enforcement officers that deal with just reactive complaints and referrals to law enforcement and referrals to the cannabis program. Again, one of the issues that we discovered is there's not a lot of room to move up in the one being a regular officer and the two being a supervisor. So retention might be an issue in the future, so we'll discuss that here in just a second. And, oh, and just for statistical information as to what we're feeling that we're up against, I ran the numbers this morning and it looks like we're up 30% in complaints again this year. And I just don't see that trend changing. And we want to be responsive to the community, but at some point, I'm afraid that it would be a little too much under this current structure. So the board gave direction on 9/22 of 2020 to study code enforcement and bring forward a reorganization plan to sort of satisfy some of these concerns that we were discussing. And then also adequately respond to increasing community complaints, which we have confirmed is happening. And then incorporating the illegal cannabis enforcement operations. And at this time, they included a mention of satellite imagery, which has changed direction a little bit if that's going to be housed in the cannabis unit. So that's one thing that we won't address necessarily in the code enforcement reorganization plan. But also to amend the existing ordinances, which we have successfully done as I described. So we've satisfied part of that direction already. So this is what we're proposing as staff for reorganization of code enforcement as it is. In the next slide, we'll discuss how we would incorporate a proactive cannabis approach. But just for the divisional structure of code enforcement, we felt that this would be appropriate because it would mirror planning and building and give some room for, you know, a way to move up for code officers based on merit or performance with the structure of having a one, two. And a three, we discussed three, it's not currently under development. But again, that's something that is also available in other departments. So ultimately, based on certifications, a little experience, there's a little more room for movement. There's a traditional supervisor position, also an administrative assistant to handle some of the administrative functions to divide that up, and then a traditional manager on the allocation table.
And John, if I could interrupt you, this is Nash Gonzalez. We've already started the balls in motion on this by working with HR and moving this program forward. This was something that should have been started back in September. It wasn't. So as I came onboard, I took a look at this model and started working with HR. And we were able to move these positions forward. So at this point in time, this is being proposed in the budget for the department. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, John.
Thank you for clarifying that, too. I just, we wanted to make sure that we were clear that there's two different things happening at the same time. So if we go to the next.
John, before you go.
Yes, sir.
So I have a question. So if you go back to the last slide, I guess. You know, when I first was supervisor, there were only three code enforcement officers for the entire county. One of the three was on the coast, two of the three were inland. And if I'm reading this chart correctly, we would go to having a staff of five, six, seven, eight, nine people. And only one of the nine would be on the coast. And to me, that just seems lopsided. I realize some of the administrative support in Ukiah is helpful to the one code enforcement officer on the coast, but I think there's enough code enforcement complaints that I'm aware of on the coast to warrant two code enforcement officers on the coast.
So really, we feel the same way. Staff identified that as being definitely something that we want to consider. So in our presentation, if you see the reorg-proposed code enforcement officer at the bottom, we connected it to both coast and inland with the idea that perhaps we could have two on the coast, two inland, and then one as a platoon person that would work in between the coast and inland as a support function, which we find to be helpful, especially as we need to move building files and all that. It's just sort of an internal structure thing that we find would be ultimately pretty helpful.
And Supervisor Jordan, if I may interrupt John again. One of the reasons we tied the two together, and although the code enforcement officer could be stationed out of Ukiah, but also working the coast area, is because of space limitations in our Fort Bragg office right now. So we're basically at a point where we have no space in Fort Bragg. So what we're trying to do is be able to allocate those positions so that we can move them back and forth. So there would be, in essence, two code enforcement officers serving the coast, but one of them would be at least out of Ukiah. Yeah, go ahead, John.
Supervisor, does that answer your question?
It's maybe not the answer I wanted to hear, but okay.
Okay, so if we go over here to... So this is where we would be bringing in our proposal for the cannabis enforcement model, the enhanced cannabis enforcement model. So we feel like first thing that would need to be addressed as we grow in size, we would probably need some support from a department analyst, because as you can see here, it would be a pretty big division at this point with some additional help from a staff assistant, just due to the high volume of noticing and paperwork that's experienced in regulatory enforcement, along with all the PRAs and managing the AVA program and all of those type of functions. So we want to make sure that those are preserved. And then we would bring in two dedicated officers to proactive enforcement, which would be your initial contact, selecting potential targets with the sheriff. And we'd have our two original team members that are still dedicated to reactive enforcement and taking complaints. And then we would also want to incorporate two dedicated officers to work specifically with the sheriff on sites that the sheriff visits, that we would be a support function to make sure that as the illegal cannabis cultivation is criminally abated, that we would have officers there to then assess the site for damages. So that's where regulatory enforcement really becomes a powerful element is once the cannabis is removed, there's still the infrastructure, there's still the potential for environmental damage. And we would like to work with comments specifically to make sure that we're able to remediate some of those sites once the sheriff is done with the criminal investigation part of it. So that is what we have found to be sort of a mirror of some of the effective components of Humboldt's model. So now, moving to the cannabis department, I have a bit of permission to speak on their behalf, or at least the presentation, but any questions would appropriately go to them. So this is how they're structured currently. In our discussions, we felt that the planners dedicated to applications and processing, you know, really, they should probably stay doing that. If anything, maybe then a different discussion, you know, more of those folks. However, a standalone compliance and enforcement element within the cannabis department is non-existent at this time. So based on our discussion, we felt as staff that one way, probably the best way, is to have a supervisor that could oversee a few of those elements. And one of the first things would be the contract with the satellite imagery provider. There would need to be somebody managing that who's either a GIS-type of person or a planner to work on just housing that imagery, working with the communications hub and code enforcement and the sheriff. So I imagine they would be a pretty busy person. An administrative assistant to handle the administrative functions, two dedicated compliance people in that unit to monitor the in-program sites. And then, of course, if there's an issue that cannot be resolved and a denial moves forward, they would be the folks that would then refer it back to the code enforcement team or the sheriff. And then also a contract with an environmental science provider that has a multitude of benefits, but one of those obviously would be assessing some of the, you know, problems that we've experienced with, you know, some of the sites and the environmental damage. I'll let the cannabis department speak a little bit on that and the questions portion. And then for the sheriff's comment unit, which is the County Mendocino Marijuana Eradication Team, currently, if all goes well and the staff has not pulled away on other assignments, there's a sergeant there, a deputy that's full-time, and a half-time deputy. We feel that adding four more deputies and a sheriff's service technician ultimately would be the best-case scenario to move forward with this plan and be effective in proactive cannabis enforcement. And additionally, a contract with either the same or a unique environmental science provider to create environmental reports for criminal investigations to aid in prosecution of egregious environmental violations. That goes a long way with getting these cases to the finish line as far as, you know, the court proceedings go. And getting these positions filled, that's going to be a little bit more challenging, as you may know, but I'll let the sheriff talk about that. And here in county, or for county council, we talked quite a bit with them as to what they may feel would be appropriate based on what we're suggesting in this plan. And so they felt a wanted additional deputy county council would be appropriate. If you have any specific questions as to how we came to that, I'm sure that they'd be more than willing to elaborate. But right now, we have one deputy county council assigned to code as nearly a full-time deal, which is instrumental in our success. And certainly, we're going to want to expand on that moving forward. So overall, to move forward with this based on the plan that we've outlined, all of our really deep-dive discussions, this is what you're looking at in its totality as presented, based on, like I say, a lot of information gathering and what we feel is going to be effective based on the research that we've done. You'll see on the far left, of course, is the code enforcement reorganization proposal and then all the green to the right of that for all the elements that we'd be asking for out of this presentation. And with that, I will turn it back to Nash.
Yes, thank you, John. So what we are looking here today from the board is direction regarding this proposal before you today. And also, once staff is provided with clear direction, staff can then come back with a cost analysis as to what it would take to implement this model and obviously provide greater detail to the board as far as the cost for the enhanced enforcement model. So at this point, I'll go ahead and put it out there to any of the other supporting departments here on this Zoom meeting, if they want to go ahead and add anything else. Otherwise, we're all available for questions.
Okay, Supervisor Mulhern and then Supervisor Williams.
Thank you, Chair. I am hoping for some clarification on the cannabis enforcement ecosystem slide and how the resources will be shared or what those impacts will be. I think that you had mentioned that you all had discussed what that should look like, but I didn't get a clear vision from the presentation about what that actually means.
Go ahead. Okay, this is John Burks again. Thank you, Supervisor. Through the chair, I'd like to answer that. So this particular slide is an overall representation of how we can incorporate all these elements. So in this, it's just more of a concept than needing resources. So we have a few different moving pieces with all of those we feel will represent, you know, something special. So there's an item later today that involves the tax collector. We've been in, code enforcement's been in close discussion with the assessor in terms of assessing in a much quicker fashion the illegal structures that support cannabis, because you still are subject to an assessment, whether it's built with or without a permit. So we're going to be moving forward with that independently. But again, this is just a conceptual slide of how we want everything to tie together. So obviously, you know how code cannabis and the sheriff and county council operate, but there's a couple other ones that we wanted to put in here that are equally as important. So they may not necessarily need any specific resources at the moment, but we wanted to make sure to call them out so that the board and the community were aware that we do all work together and we'll be working together more as a global, you know, county response.
Does that answer your question, Supervisor Mulhern?
Not exactly. Sounds like there's more details to come, though.
And I think there is. Supervisor McCordy and I had a tour of the assessor's office. And I think it is possible that they may need, you know, some additional staffing over there to keep up with the referrals. I think the cannabis manager has her hand up.
Yeah, hello, if I may through the chair, just maybe a couple of things to add to Supervisor Mulhern's question. You know, part of adding staffing to the cannabis program for the purposes of enforcement and compliance is that we are often interacting with CalCannabis, Fish and Wildlife, and the State Water Resource Control Board through our permitting and application processes. So it would, for us, be really helpful to have the additional staff. So as we're working on compliance and then potentially coordinating enforcement efforts, we have the staff to help identify potential environmental compliance issues, whether those are in-program or out-of-program components or participants. So hopefully, that might help clarify some of how we would dovetail with the other agencies.
Okay, Supervisor Williams and then Supervisor Hachek.
Yeah, I had a few questions. Will this plan mitigate the water truck hauling? Or do we need additional resources, et cetera, referral to another agency?
If I may through the chair, I think this is probably a question that's best answered by the sheriff because that falls under the penal code.
So can maybe staff could refer it to the sheriff? I just want some sort of follow-up. We've been, I think the board's been hearing about concerns about water truck hauling for a long time. We're now in a drought. And I want to make sure we have a plan. If we do, maybe it's already in progress, that's great, but.
No, we do.
If I may through the chair. So if a complaint comes in regarding water, this would be something that would be referred to the sheriff because that is the theft of water. It could be referred to the highway patrol because of the transportation, also to the Department of Water Resources and Califish and Game. So that's where the supporting agencies would be coming in to assist in the issue of water trucks.
So can the public send these complaints, maybe with, you know, photos or license plates, whatever the DOT numbers, whatever they may have, to code enforcement, knowing that code enforcement will refer it to the appropriate agency?
If I may through the chair, yes, that is something that code enforcement would take the complaint. And again, the idea of the hub and being monitored is that it would be referred to the sheriff's department. It would be referred to the highway patrol. Any agency that would have jurisdiction over the crime would receive a copy of that complaint. So code enforcement would act as the hub.
Okay. Second question, once we get this satellite imagery subscription in place, is it possible to produce a map of the legal farms and the unlawful farms? Is it possible to generate that for the board to review? I mean, it doesn't have to be for the entire county, but some of the areas where we're getting a constant flow of complaints. I would like to see what we've permitted and how many other farms there are and where.
Thank you. If I may through the chair, this is Julia Kragg, Assistant Director. And my recommendation on that would be that we have a discussion with council, at least on that as well, as there can be some concerns over security issues when you're publishing information such as that, as we've seen with some of the other items that we used to have published on. published on our website, such as the list of folks that were in program and the need to pull that back down. So I think it's not, you know, a no on that, but just something that maybe needs to be flushed out a little bit further.
Okay, that works. And then last, what are our expectations? As I see it, state voters didn't vote to legalize and legitimize an existing industry. They voted to essentially create a new industry. We have some folks who happen to be on appropriate land, have the resources to get through the into the regulated market, but there's far more that don't have a chance. And I know one of the messages that we've conveyed is we want to funnel people into the regulated system. We want to force them into legalization. But for a lot of them, potentially thousands in our county, it's just not possible. They don't live on land that will ever pass for state licensing. And we can suggest that they relocate to appropriate land, but you know, how much ag land or rangeland that's already been tilled is there and at what cost? I just don't see it as feasible. So curious what, you know, as a board, what do we feel our expectations are just is it enough to shut down the people who have been cultivating for maybe for decades, have no other economic opportunities in the community? It's, I think we somehow this, and I support this plan, but somehow it needs to be tied in with realistic picture of where we plan to go with permitting and licensing. Because if it's just, if it's just a dead end, if it's, we're going to go out there and shut down thousands of farms and they have no opportunity to come into compliance. I don't know if that's really the ingredients for success.
Okay, I'll add in there supervisor Hachek.
Thank you, Chair Jordi. I had a couple of questions about the like the satellite imagery and versus on the ground. And we did get a letter from Dennis Loda about that and the need, you know, I saw in the presentation that there was a, that the satellite imagery would supplement site inspections. And I guess I want to make sure that we would still have site inspections, even though we have this, you know, we just can't sit back in our offices and look at the satellite imagery and determine what's going on on the ground. So I want to make sure that we have enough people power out there, resources to do the on the ground inspections too. So I hope that's being considered in this plan. The other question was how to target proactively? And so I'm sure Sheriff Kendall has thought about this a lot, but even when you get the satellite imagery, how do you, like the question that Mo Ramirez brought forth this morning was, how do you say, oh, that's, that's a violent, you know, crime area or that's they're doing egregious environmental harm? So how is that going to happen in reality, you know, with the satellite imagery? And then question for Sheriff Kendall.
Thank you, supervisor Hachek. Sheriff and I, Kendall, we're receiving intel on a constant basis and a lot of these locations, one of the reasons why it's important that the sheriffs always put their eyes on these issues, the moment that they come in is because we have been receiving intel for, well, my entire career. We know that there are various drug trafficking organizations in the county. We see where they go from year to year. Sometimes we're able to catch them, sometimes they're a step or two ahead of us. And a lot of the intel that comes in is fresh every year and every spring. We get calls from people who talk about machine gun fire coming out of certain grows, things like that, we need to get our eyes on because we don't want a code enforcement officer or someone else who is unarmed and unequipped, ill-equipped to deal with these folks to go out to these locations. The other issue is we have a big foothold of some extremely dangerous people in this county and we need to get that to hold out of here as soon as possible. There is going to be arguments and issues about legacy growers and things like that. And we can say, well, you know, these folks have been doing it for years, but the fact is if they've been breaking the law for years, we have to draw a line in the sand or we will continue to have this problem. And that line in the sand is be very fun. And if they're doing things in an area that is affecting the environment, or if they're completing violent crimes, if they're a drug trafficking organization, these are the things that we have to get in front of right now. And we've got to have a backbone and we've got to stand up to it and say enough's enough. But as far as the intel goes, there are a lot of locations that we're taking intel on a daily basis. And when we confirm the location of these things and the satellite imagery is going to be extremely helpful, but all that it does is it cuts you down on the amount of recon flights that we will have to do. It cuts down on a lot of the legwork, but these things still have to be confirmed by a human being.
All right, well, thank you on that. And I guess another question about the Humboldt model was using the satellite imagery and then they would send out the abatement notices to all the people that they saw, you know, growing. And so, you know, if we have 8,000 letters that we need to send out to say, stop it or else you have to pay a fine or, or come in and get licensed, then how realistic is that for our, even with this beefed up, you know, resources and people power? How realistic is it that we can get that accomplished and have some teeth to that, that effort?
This is John Burks with code enforcement, if I may through the chair, answer that question. That's definitely part of the strategy. So we would notice a certain area, you know, based on how we direct the targeted enforcement and send out these initial contact letters, notices, sometimes they're called abatement notices. Typically, we don't call them that because that implies sort of a different function. So we would send them out and give everybody an opportunity to comply and then be plan on addressing any of the folks that were unwilling to comply, non-responsive. And so we would measure our ability to send out these notices based on staffing resources, the idea that we're blending the imagery with the site inspection. So we would only, you know, do specific areas at a time, knowing that we're going to be addressing them regulatorily and it's going to take a little bit of time to process them. So we would select the area, send out the notices and then address it. And that's to answer maybe a question that you had earlier about site inspections. Yes, that's again, why we're asking for these particular staffing resources as we felt it was an appropriate blend of the right amount of people without asking too much and incorporating the imagery to get the maximum amount of, you know, work done with the combination of the two.
All right, well, well, thank you very much. And I really want to thank everyone who worked on this plan and I'm very supportive of it.
Do you see a hand raised by Kristen Cannabis Division? Did you have something to add?
I think for the most part, John covered it, but I just wanted to be absolutely clear that we are looking to add additional planners to the cannabis enforcement and compliance arm that we're looking to develop, simply so that we can keep the planners who are processing applications in the office as much as possible to process those applications and then have additional staffing to assist with inspections, not just initial inspections, but also ongoing compliance inspections that we're hoping to do more partnering with Cal cannabis on. So I just wanted to make sure that it was really clear that we are not looking to utilize aerial imagery to get rid of inspection activities in the department. We're looking as, looking at it as a tool to supplement those inspections and be better prepared to go out into the field.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, supervisor McCordy and then supervisor Williams.
So one of the things that I'm most concerned about are sort of the obvious, just recently popped up kind of grows because I think the attitude of among the legal growers is that Mendocino doesn't enforce their, their cannabis rules and their ordinance. So certainly Potter Valley, Redwood Valley have had a lot of stuff pop up in the last 24 months. And those are the kinds of people I'm particularly interested in targeting along with the ones that are, are obviously dangerous to people or the environment. So for me, those are the kind of priorities as we try to sort through this. We're not going to be able to get all 8,000 illegal grows in the first year and, you know, you're, you're absolutely right supervisor Williams, it's really clear that on a statewide basis, when, when the laws were passed, creating legal cannabis. It was for an industry that didn't exist. It wasn't necessary to legalize the existing industry. And it's really clear too, that the environmentalists really, really, really wanted to punish the cannabis growers for their perceived environmental crimes. And that's why we have such active involvement with resource agencies and the permitting process, which in some respects is, makes it one of the most difficult businesses to run in California. I, it's probably easier to run a gravel business than it is a cannabis business based on, on the way some of the rules are perceived and used. So I, I just kind of bring that up that from my thinking. I don't think we're going to instantly disrupt all the social fabric of Mendocino. We're going to go after the most egregious violations of our ordinance and the people who really have no business operating in our community because they have no intention of contributing. And that's one of the things that we have to constantly think about our jobs is to kind of contribute to the public good. And, and I think we all agree that a cannabis industry could be part of the public good, could create jobs and tax base and wealth. But there's obviously some people we don't want in the business. And, you know, we see that with virtually every kind of businesses, some people you know are just only end up for the money and really have no concern about even being ethical about how they operate, whether it's real estate or breeding animals or, or growing cannabis. And I think that's as, as we start to work through this process, I think we'll become really clear, you know, who, who needs to go first and we'll kind of take it from there. But it's based on my conversations with people in my, my district, and I'm sure conversations you had, there are some people that really are high on the list of who needs to be abated. And that's kind of how I'm thinking about this. And yes, I do support this, it's going to cost us. Let's make no mistake about it, it will cost us, but I think we all made a promise that we're really interested in the health and well being of our communities. And I think that this is something that rises to the level of, of, you know, serious endangerment of that. And that's why we're here and that's why we're having this discussion.
Okay. Supervisor Williams.
Of the 1,158 who stepped forward and tried to get on board with paying taxes and following rules, it looks like most, maybe 90%, won't make it to state annual license. I imagine some of that pool will try to submit a phase three application to get a use permit. A lot of them I think will fail. When I look at what's required, I just don't see it as feasible. I mean, you can have a great farm and it happens to be in a flood plain or the parcel size is wrong or, you know, with discretionary use permit, your neighbors show up and they didn't know you were cultivating, but you know, now that they do, they're against it. I don't, I don't see a lot of folks getting through phase three anytime soon. If they do, it'll probably be years. So the question is, what do we do with about a thousand who stepped forward, were brave, tried to come into compliance, couldn't make it? Do we enforce against them? And I know I'm bringing it up because this plan is a bit forward looking. We're talking about hiring and training and, you know, we're looking years into the future. What do we do with a pool of, of applicants who couldn't get legal?
I see hands raised by both Cannabis Department and Plenty Department.
Um, this is Kristin Neville with the Cannabis Department. I imagine I should try to tackle that question first and PBS can feel free to please back me up or add additional information. I mean, I think our goal really needs to be trying to get this 1,148 through the permitting process locally and onto an annual license. And no, these programs are not easy. The state has created a very rigorous pathway for the licensing of all types of cannabis projects throughout the state. And so hopefully we will have a discretionary permit pathway as an opportunity so that we can condition some of these permits and put compliance programs in place that gives them some time to phase in these upgrades that they may need to do to mitigate environmental issues. And I think as far as looking at what kind of enforcement we might utilize to address applicants who cannot make it through. I don't see necessarily boots on the ground perhaps as being the primary tool that we would use. I think making sure that folks understand clearly what their opportunities are for compliance and permitting and then making sure they understand the potential consequences if they choose to cultivate without a local permit and a state license. Looking at adding administrative staff to the department would help us have someone that can field some of those questions, those compliance questions directly without having to add additional burden or bandwidth to the administrative staff that we currently have. So my number one priority is getting folks permitted and licensed and hopefully we don't see a 90% loss in our pool currently. And then if they can't cultivate, making sure that they have those notices from the department directly that they cannot cultivate and that they clearly understand what the consequences and options are before we defer them to code enforcement and or law enforcement.
Kristen, while we have you, what about the, I don't know how many thousands, sometimes I hear 8,000, I don't know what the number is. There's thousands more that are cultivating that didn't try to come into phase one. We, I, it doesn't look, it doesn't seem realistic that they're going to make it through phase three. Are we talking about shutting them down?
I mean, I think ultimately with an enforcement program, we are talking about shutting down all illicit forms of cannabis cultivation, right? But I think primarily the cannabis department is looking for additional staffing to help ensure that we can answer the questions about compliance. A, what are the options for permitting? Do you qualify, right? How do we get you into the system? How long might it take? You know, it's hard to answer those questions when we're kind of still bumping along through phase one and that program is still arguably having some morphing, shifting and changing to it. And so like we owe it to the community to be able to answer these questions and provide the guidance. So hopefully we can build a stronger public private partnership, right? Where the public portion, the cultivators of the private portion, and it needs to be a partnership. So we really need a discretionary permit process so we can look towards a more feasible annual license opportunity for our cultivators. But even without that, I, I would have to say the staff is very committed, I'm very committed to trying to make whatever we have work. So, you know, and then hopefully we'll be able to continue to work with the state, our state agency partners to find ways to streamline what's required at the state. But that, you know, is a partnership again, and we don't have a lot of control over that, those changes.
Well, if I could add a little bit, so my thought is, you know, where we start with enforcement is we kind of go back to that basic principle of, you know, where do laws come into being? And, you know, we live in a country where we, we, you know, cherish freedom and, you know, everybody wants freedom and, and we all have the freedom, as it's often said in, in school, you have the freedom to extend your arm, arm forward until it reaches your neighbor's nose. And so what we're trying to do is, is prioritize those cultivation sites that have, you know, hit the neighbor's nose, whether it's environmental damage or, or just, you know, damage to the neighborhood. So I think that's kind of, you know, in the simplest way, how we prioritize this. And I'm very much supportive of, you know, an active code enforcement modeled after the Humboldt County model, but, but prioritizing those sites that are, you know, hurting the neighbor, hurting the, the environment in an obvious way. So with that, I, I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, you know, we definitely are going to have to add additional funding from the county to, to support this. Also looking at the fact that the state of California is in one of those wonderful years where state revenues are up, you know, beyond anybody's imagination. Every, this happens every, maybe every decade where the stock market just has taken off and we have all these capital gains income that come into the state. The state revenues are fluctuate wildly because they can get a tremendous amount of state income tax off of, you know, the stock market. Local government doesn't see that kind of fluctuation in revenues. And I'm just curious if, if any of the departments are hearing any opportunities from your counterparts at the state that maybe some of these activities that we're taking, taking on here and enhancing in Mendocino County, maybe we could look to the, some of that one-time windfall that the state's dealing with to help, help us ramp up our code enforcement. Because after all, these aren't just violations of, of county ordinance. In many cases, we're dealing with violation of, of state regulations and state law.
Through the chair to the board, I spoke with the governor's office last week regarding just this. The governor's office is understanding of the plight because they've heard from basically every sheriff in Northern California. We are all facing very similar issues. And they have told me that they will get back to me. I've also spoken with some other representatives regarding resources and whatnot to help these counties who are being the most greatly impacted by it. I don't know what those resources will look like. I would enjoy having at least three more from various resource teams, including Department of Fish and Wildlife. I spoke with State Parks. State Parks is willing to assist with this, but State Parks, I believe, has five for, for the state. And therefore they're not going to be able to provide a lot, but they can provide some. But the important part is that we all understand and realize that this is going to be a, I would imagine somewhere between three and five years before we actually get this issue cleaned up. And this is the long game and this problem did not pop up overnight and it won't be solved overnight. But we will continue to work on these relationships with the state. And I believe that the state does have some culpability in the things that are going on here. And I think that we all need to kind of stand together on this and have some good resolve about taking a direction and moving forward on it. And I, I believe that they will fall right into line with us. Thank you.
Thank you. I see a hand raised from Planning Building.
Hi, this is John Burks again, Code Enforcement Supervisor Chair. If I can answer a couple of general questions. So the, one of the big benefits of the communication hub and centralizing the information is if the board gives direction or oversight from the Cannabis Department and how we move forward with this, if there are changes, we can incorporate those moving forward. So we'll just continue with the strategies we've laid it out, how we prioritize directed enforcement. But if at any point that were to be altered or changed in some capacity, we could respond fairly quickly in terms of what your vision is. What we don't want is to deviate from the overall strategy. Certainly the sheriff's priorities won't be changing. But as far as code enforcement and how and who we refer, you know, back to cannabis as a potential pathway forward, we can incorporate those elements through this communication. We feel very strongly about that. So that's sort of the pathway forward question. So as, you know, the changes to the cannabis ordinance come along, we can, you know, adapt. Cause it'll be a little while to get this off of the ground, which will give us time to incorporate any possible changes. To Supervisor McGordy, if I may respond through the chair. Public impression is a tricky thing. I've heard that code enforcement doesn't do anything, but part of the problem is when we only have a limited amount of staff, we have two folks in code working on cannabis consistently. It's really hard to break away to do any kind of messaging, to share a lot of the successes that we have through our unit. One of the elements that we plan to incorporate moving forward, because we do get a lot of requests for statistical information, report outs, describing what it is we're doing, you know, trying to let the public know that, you know, that this isn't a good idea. I, I think that a lot of people are under the impression that they can, you know, get away with putting up a lot of hoop houses, be very close to property lines and cultivating cannabis because they feel like everybody's doing it. But I think that if we were able to message better with having more staff, we'd be able to let folks know that it's not a good idea and that there's some really significant penalties associated with that now. So that's certainly something that we're going to roll out and hopefully let people know that it's, and create a deterrent to not do this moving forward. So Supervisor McGordy, we certainly do hear those same things, but as, as we roll this out, we want them to know that, you know, it's certainly not a good idea and we'll give them a very short opportunity to become compliant.
Okay. Supervisor McGordy, do you have something else to add?
This question is kind of for, for John Burks and Sheriff Kendall. First of all, John, I didn't mean to specifically criticize anyone. It's just kind of a, a general observation on, on public perception. And I, I know you guys work hard and you take yourself, your work seriously and try the best to, that you can. But taking a look to the north of us, what's been the experience with Humboldt County? How, how long have they been at it? And what has their success looked like?
Yeah, I can. Thank you Supervisor. And, and no, I, I was just relaying that that's what the public expresses to me when I, I speak to them. And something that they requested is that we're able to, you know, provide them information of what we're doing. And I'd, I'd really like to do that for their benefit and for your benefit. As far as Humboldt, their strategic plan involved starting with the greatest environmental impact and size. A lot of their strategy was based on size. Now granted, they walked into it, you know, pretty much up and running. They had staff of really significant, significant staff resource to just kind of attack this similar plan. So they started off with the largest environmental damage, then they went to 10,000 square feet of canopy or more, you know, over the course of approximately a year. And then the following year, we're able to address 6,500 to 10. And then it was closer to 2,500 to 6,000 square feet of canopy. So they just sort of cast a net every year. And, you know, specifically focused on those sites and it seemed to be pretty effective. Now that's been going on for years. And I estimate that this will also need to go on for years, but we're hoping to roll out as, as strongly as we can in a similar approach. We've, and again, we've outlined our strategy and we'd like to ultimately stick to that, but we think that it will be effective.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Supervisor Williams?
I, I understand that about 15% of state licenses today are for cultivation sites that have no water, that rely entirely on water hauling. Our program manager could probably fact check. I think it's going to be a problem that a lot of, you know, we're struggling with priorities. A lot of them won't make it through. And, you know, I think we're trying to, we're grappling with how do you set priorities that, that mitigate cartel activity that's causing environmental destruction? And, you know, maybe not start with a neighbor who's been at it for decades and isn't causing negative impacts. But, you know, it's really hard with equal protection that anybody who's hauling water illegally is causing environmental destruction. And I don't know that we're in a position to, to pick and choose. We can choose the priority of the rules, but I don't think we can choose, you know, just because somebody has been here longer and they've been breaking the rule longer that somehow they're, they're less of a priority. So in that regard, I think it would be beneficial to the public if we were to publish the priorities of what, you know, where we plan to start, how we plan to work down, but also make it clear that we're, we're not saying there won't be enforcement for smaller gardens. Because if we say we're only looking at 10,000 square feet or larger, I'm worried we're going to see a lot of 10,000 square foot gardens pop up from folks hearing we're not, that's a threshold we won't enforce below it. And I don't know, maybe, maybe code enforcement cannabis program or sheriff can think about what that, what, what the appropriate messaging is. You know, in my mind, it's don't cause problems to your community or your neighbors. And, you know, it could be size, it could be water hauling. Maybe it's, it's guard dogs. It's any sort of negative impact is going to get you on the radar and probably prioritize higher than, than other lawbreakers.
I see a hand raised from Planning Building.
So just to clarify, here in our Mendocino model, if you will, we were going to prioritize not based on size, but basically on community need at this point, which we've outlined in that strategy. We also did get some previous direction from the board of a couple of elements that they also wanted to see for directed enforcement. So we've incorporated all of those. So in no way do we want to message that this would be size-based. That was just a particular method that Humboldt used. And again, why we didn't feel that an apples-to-apples comparison would work. We're starting out a little later, so we have a different set of priorities that we feel will be effective. And there will be no size. It could be a backyard. It could be something gigantic. It's really all about the community quality of life impact. And of course, again, criminal activity, the drug trafficking organizations, environmental damage, all rank very high.
Okay. Cannabis Division Manager?
Yeah. Hello, Kristin Neville, Cannabis Division Manager. I think if we're also trying to address the water hauling and potentially looking at piecing that out in the future, we can look at conditions that increase water storage, right? So one of the things that Mendocino cultivators aren't necessarily, haven't necessarily been encouraged to do is to increase water storage so that they have seasonal supplies on backup. So I think, again, if we move into a discretionary permitting process, we have the ability with the Planning Commission to condition those permits to increase storage amounts, which would therefore reduce water, surface water usage, in-ground water usage, and then also reduce the need for water hauling on drier parcels.
Thank you. Supervisor Moore?
Thank you Chair. I was wondering if Mr. Burks could address the statement he just made about community quality of life. And it, it made it sound like that was a, a document or some type of list that already exists. And I don't find that anywhere in our agenda packet. So if that, if there are factors that you specifically plan on targeting, I was hoping to be able to see that before we move much further in the conversation of what the board wants to see targeted.
Absolutely. So in previous board direction, community quality of life was, you know, a response or targeting by code enforcement is simply neighborhood grows that have a huge impact on a lot of people. And we deal with those quite a bit right now, just through the complaint-based system. So for example, a hoop house goes up on, you know, half acre parcels. It's got 200 plants in it. Now the smell, the, the, the water use, the pests, so on and so forth. So that has, can have a, a big impact on a lot of neighbors. And so we, those generate a lot of complaints. So when we think of community quality of life, those are the type of things that we feel are most appropriate to address under the current system. And certainly we'll be keeping those moving forward.
Thank you Chair. Do you mind if I just make one comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, one of the reasons that I support the satellite enforcement is because it takes out of the equation this sort of, you know, I don't, I, I don't like Johnny. And so all the neighbors and I are going to get together and we're going to send in the most complaints until Johnny gets shut down. And I don't think that's a fair way to do code enforcement. I mean, Johnny, you know, may not bring cookies to everybody, but if he's following all the rules and, and, and he has a legal appropriate site, then, you know, that was in my mind, why we need the shift away from the complaint-driven process. I just want to make that comment before we go much further having the conversation. And I don't actually know anybody named Johnny. I'm just using a.
Maybe, maybe we could go back to John over code enforcement. I, I took it that he was using those general standards of, of impacting a, a greater number of residents. But through the active code enforcement of the county as, as actually a different model, as a variation of, of the existing model, but not relying on, on neighbor, neighbor's complaints, but just it, the impact is affecting a greater number of people. But that was my interpretation of what. So John, can you elaborate?
I, I can. Thank you Chair and Supervisor Moore. So yes, there, there are instances where, you know, perhaps there are, you know, specific people in a neighborhood who don't like other people. But ultimately, we feel like we're able to bring some, you know, an opportunity to comply just for the greater good. But ultimately, if they're, you know, breaking the law, they're breaking the law. So we don't want to be used as a tool in neighborhood feuds per se. But at the same time, in most of the conflicts that we deal with, there is some validity. And we try to balance how much time we invest in solving those problems, sort of, you know, based on what's actually happening on the ground. And that's why we do, you know, an extensive investigation with all of these to really get down to the core of the problem and solve it. But at the same time, it's our job to enforce the, the law. And if it's being broken, we feel that we're going to address that in some capacity.
Thank you. Supervisor Williams?
One of the, there was a great article on the Anderson Valley Advertiser, maybe a year ago by George Hollister. And it was about outlaws. And basically, if you don't think you're an outlaw, you must not know the, the rules. And I think that's what a lot of cannabis cultivators are dealing with. I, you know, when we talk environmental destruction through the state's lens, that may be having a culvert that's too small. Irrespective of the fact that it was put in decades ago and, you know, by somebody else who wasn't growing cannabis, maybe it was logging activity. That's a potentially an environmental violation today. I don't see that as a high priority. But I see somebody who's pulling water in an unplated truck from the Eel River and delivering to a cannabis farm. That, that strikes me as a, as a, as a high priority. So I think we need more granularity than just breaking environmental laws. You know, there are environmental laws that are really, you know, practically, I don't see the impact. Sacramento does, but I, I don't see it. And there's others where I think most of our population, when we see it, we know it. That's environmental impact that we don't stand for. How, how do we get that level of detail? Is that something that code enforcement could begin working on?
Could you, I'm sorry, could you clarify the question of?
Yeah, the question, the question is to group all environmental destruction together. I, there's, there's, you know, there's public values about what we consider to be an environmental impact that may not necessarily match, you know, the state. Somebody who cleared land or, you know, bought land that was already cleared decades ago, asking them to move today because there, there might've been a sensitive species, it's just creating a new impact, right? Even though that may be the letter of the law, I don't see that as high a priority as pulling water from a river. How do we at a local level decide which environmental concerns are the higher priority and where that line in the sand is?
Well, I'm sure that we could, oh, I'm sorry, if I may answer the question through the chair. John Burks again, Code Enforcement Supervisor. I'm sure that we could create sort of a tiered structure of what would be most appropriate to address first. But just to be perfectly honest, most of what we see in code enforcement currently is major environmental damage, tree removal, grading, non-permitted structures, erosion, stormwater violations. It's pretty easy at this point for how we prioritize. We'd be lucky if we came across just a culvert on any one of, you know, these particular illegal cannabis cultivation situations, not to mention the garbage, that, you know, the illegal storage of trash and debris, you know, all of those things. It's not very common that we would spend a lot of time on anything, kind of what you're describing, that would be on the lower end. We're just trying to wrestle these really big issues at the moment, but we certainly could create an internal policy of how we want to go about it. It would be really easy to do and follow up on.
And is it last, is it, is it possible to give the board some documentation of these environmental impacts as they're discovered and debated?
Oh yeah, I'm, I'm sure that we could. Maybe we could incorporate that in sort of the report out element that we're hoping to incorporate in this in terms of how we track the information.
Yeah, I hope, I hope that would be fantastic. I hope we can give that direction, but as we go, we'd want to make sure the board and the public is aware of what we're debating.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we go to public comments? Supervisor Heschak?
Thank you Chair Jordy. I was, I was just going to say that probably between Sheriff Kendall and Code Enforcement John Burks, they could keep themselves busy for a few years right now, dealing with what we call the egregious environmental harms and, and the violent situations in illegal grows. So I just think that we're kind of, I, I think we need to look at the big picture. And do we approve of this big picture realignment of the code enforcement to be a proactive? And I certainly am in agreement with that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions at this time? Comments? I see Glenn's cat's raising its tail, but I don't think that's a... So let's go to a public comment.
First will be a voicemail, then followed by Monique Ramirez, Ron Edwards and Michael Katz.
Dennis Slota, Item 5C, Cannabis Enforcement Expansion. Dear Chair Jurety and Supervisors, thank you very much for moving toward a proactive cannabis enforcement program. While aerial surveillance is an essential tool for locating egregious operations from the air, it is useless in detecting operations within existing structures. For example, a permitted greenhouse converted to a methamphetamine lab, or multiple levels built within one greenhouse to double or triple the number of plants, illegal grading, illegal water diversion, et cetera, et cetera. A robust enforcement program must include annual site visits to visually inspect all aspects of the operation, much as the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act requires the Planning Department to conduct annual site visits of mining operations and submit the inspection reports to the state. Inspection costs should be paid by the operator. Ideally, the inspection reports should be placed on the website of the department conducting the investigation. These postings should be done in real time and identify the inspector, date, agencies, and findings. Special coding could be used to not directly identify the owner or address if privacy is an issue. The public must be able to observe that inspections are actually taking place, unlike what happened in Phase One. Thank you all for your hard work on this issue.
Next on the line will be Monique Ramirez, followed by Ron Edwards and Michael Katz.
Hello, Monique Ramirez, District Three, representing the Covelo Cannabis Advocacy Group. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on this agenda item. I'm really grateful to hear in the discussion that the satellite imagery won't be solely used for site inspections. So in our CCG memo, if that was the case, we would have wanted to see some recalibration of the cost recovery for the permit fees, since inspections do take up a lot of time. One thing that I think needs to be discussed more with the board is potentially reopening the amnesty program for buildings, because it will create opportunities for landowners to come forward that have unpermitted structures. That hasn't really been discussed a whole lot in today's presentation about how unpermitted structures are going to be utilized in the satellite imagery enforcement actions. And we just want to create opportunities for people to come forward and get those things permitted as much as possible. And there's been a lot of success with the amnesty program in the past, running for a solid year in 2017. I think that was a really great time to launch that because it was the beginning of 10A17. And as we continue to look forward with the new ordinance coming online, and just all of where we're standing right now with, you know, Prop 64 and everything, I think it would be a good opportunity for the board to consider reopening that. And we also want to just give a highlighted, you know, viewpoint on the whole compliance plan issue that unpermitted structures that people have that are also trying to get permitted for the cannabis program, getting put on those compliance plans, I think is really important, and reiterating that to the community. You know, and I just feel like in the end, this is a huge conversation. When we talk about all of the illegal operators that are existing in our county, that they're not probably going to be able to come forward because of their zoning and all of this stuff, like, well then, let's look at the zoning. Let's look at ways that we can get them permitted. Maybe they need to bring it down to a 2,500 square foot cottage. And maybe we need to be okay with them being on one acre parcels. I mean, those are the things that we need to think about, because at the end of the day, cannabis is what is the driving economic force of our county, whether we like it or not, whether it's commercial or illegal. And how are we going to keep our county viable? We don't want to see like, all these people just lose their homes, like their livelihood, everything. And, and then what happens to our county? So, and I know it's tricky, and we have to find a way. But if we're acknowledging that all these people aren't going to make it, like, well, what can we do to help change that narrative? And especially with the commercial operators that are already existing in our program, I'm one of them. And it just heartens me every time I hear that only 2% or 10% of us are going to make it. I just don't believe that. We haven't even had an opportunity to see everyone come forward in the past.
Next on the line is Ron Edwards, followed by Michael Katz.
Yes, I'd like to start out with some clarification. And I hope that possibly the board could get some understanding from our cannabis manager, who I spent a number of meetings from LA to Eureka, Sacramento, on the California Cannabis Advisory Committee. And throughout the whole process of setting up the regulations, it was clear that everyone on that advisory council, everyone in the state legislature has been working for the small cultivator. And whenever this subject comes up, even in SB 59, those in traditional agriculture are just shocked at the barriers that have been placed on cannabis cultivators. And that was part of the deal to allow it not to be an ag commodity to keep it out of certain communities. Moving on from there, we need data. I mean, we are diving into this, and John is doing a great job. Trent has been doing a great job from day one. But do we know the capacity that we have now? In other words, I think that if every supervisor came forward with the complaints that they had, that would overwhelm our current department on complaints. And so how many more of those can we deal with with each new staff hire? So maybe instead of running out with this whole program, because the Supervisor Jurety brought up, we have boom and bust times. And so yes, we have lots of these complaints, the community's outraged, they want to see the board doing something, and we spend money, we have all these hires, and then we have a lull. And so now we've got cutbacks, we're cutting back the budget. So I think that we really need to go a little slower. I mean, I've been saying for three years to the board, let's get some data, let's look at things. But it never seems to really happen. We go forward with the opt-out, with the SIPCA, the Track and Trace. And I just don't want to burden departments with requests for information. But how, what is the capacity right now? The sheriff has been saying for the last year, and every meeting, about the guns, about the violence, about this. Well, we know it's going to take two and a half years for him to go through that and $2.4 million. But what is the public going to hear? What goalpost will the public hear, instead of just kind of a sugar high of saying, hey, we're going to get the satellite enforcement in? And also, it'd be nice to know realistically, as Supervisor Mahorn brought up, there are some people in the program who are doing everything correct, but they're just getting ganged up by their neighbors. And that raises the number of complaints coming into code enforcement, not the number of total individually sites. And again, water trucks. Why are we continuing to talk about these water trucks? Supervisor Williams has brought it up, it has been brought up to code enforcement, CDFW has brought it up, it keeps coming up. That seems, along with the light pollution, seem to be the number two most egregious items going on in this county. And I think if the board wants to show the public that they can do something, let's see if we can take care of those two issues. Thank you.
And last on the line is Michael Katz.
Good afternoon Supervisors, this is Michael Katz, Executive Director of the Mendocino Cannabis Alliance. Thank you for talking about this important topic today. MCA has continuously and vocally supported the need for increased enforcement on the perpetrators of egregious crimes against our environment and population. We've also encouraged increased hiring in the Sheriff's Department, Planning and Building Services, and the Mendocino Cannabis Program. Specifically in regards to this agenda item, we support the long-term strategic plan identified within the presentation. With this support clearly stated, we feel it is important to consider the following items to ensure the equitable and effective implementation of the increased enforcement efforts being discussed today. Stage one of the long-term strategic plan mentions initial contact letters for voluntary compliance. We encourage a wide-ranging public awareness campaign on multiple media platforms, including radio, internet, email, newspaper, and printed materials distributed throughout the county to inform the public about the process that is planned once it is set up. We reiterate our belief that enforcement without opportunity is a broken paradigm, and that steps must be taken to enable additional on-ramps for up to 10,000 square feet of cultivation to enter the highly regulated licensing program, which will result in greater benefit to the community due to increased environmental and community protections. The idea that this is just not possible is just not acceptable. We can work together at the local and state levels to create the change that we know we need to be created in the current regulations to support our community. We believe that much of the presentation provided today indicates a multi-departmental collaboration on increased enforcement efforts. To the extent that the Mendocino Cannabis Program itself is involved in these efforts, we believe it is essential to delineate what these new tasks will be, and to ensure that the already overburdened department is able to focus on their primary responsibility of permit application processing to alleviate the substantial backlog of work currently in the queue. And this workload will only increase with the passage of the new ordinance, bringing in influx of transitioning in new applications, adding new responsibilities to the cannabis program without clearly defined roles and responsibilities to counteract many of the streamlining efforts already underway. Regarding satellite, satellite imagery, considering the recently declared state of emergency due to historic drought conditions, we believe that the county should be using all tools at its disposal to enforce any and all illegal water diversion. Given this fact and the above-mentioned concerns about staffing, we find it problematic that control of the satellite imagery program will be housed within the cannabis program as opposed to within general code enforcement. We have previously shared facts about cannabis water usage with this board, which clearly indicate that cannabis uses substantially less water than all of the other types of commercial agriculture occurring in Mendocino County. Focusing satellite enforcement efforts and messaging about enforcement efforts exclusively on cannabis cultivation gives unscrupulous actors in other industries a free path to act without concern for being discovered. We thank you for your consideration of these items and your deliberation.
And that concludes public comment.
So I have a follow-up with staff. So maybe, maybe it's sort of semantics, but my understanding is although it may have been said that the satellite imagery would be housed within the cannabis division, my understanding is that the intent is that multiple county departments would have, would have equal access to that satellite data. So, you know, the assessor's office should have access to that data. So could staff maybe elaborate on that point?
This is John Burks in code enforcement. Yeah, so we, right now, currently, we're looking at a few different subscriptions. But the important kind of element is where do we house it? Who can manage it? We felt that the cannabis department was a good, you know, starting point. But yes, it would be widely available to all departments. And as we navigate the contracts, and what those entail, and determine how many users versus cost, and, and kind of assess that a little bit better, we'll have a more definite description of how it will, you know, be accessed by all the departments. But it is our intention to have, you know, hopefully, all departments have access to it.
Yeah, and on that point, it was raised, I think, in your presentation, or hinted at in your presentation. But, you know, I think there's, there's value to the county organization that multiple county departments have access to that satellite data. For example, you know, people, you know, most people go out and get a building permit. But obviously, there's quite a few people who don't, and have built structures. And as, and as long as those structures are not added to the tax rolls, they're evading taxes that their neighbors are paying. And so that's an example of why, in my opinion, the assessor's office needs to have access to the satellite data to do what they call discovery, which is adding structures to the tax rolls that are not currently on the tax rolls. So, and I think that, I think for the general public, I think they need to know that that's part of this, that this program is that the tax evasion that, that has taken place in this county will be coming to an end. Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, we, we hear a narrative regularly that the cannabis division planners are the bottleneck. So the question for our program managers, if we close, if we close the door today to paperwork and just processed what we have in the queue, what's sitting in the office today, about how many permits do you think we could issue?
I think that's still a really tough question. So we're, this is Kristin Neville, the Cannabis Program Manager. And I have four planners. They are splitting their time currently between inspections in the field, as well as processing applications in the office. And it's not just the applications that they're processing, they're also processing appendix G materials as they come in. So based on the priority list that was put together by Megan, who was in this position prior to me, they have been tasked with going through and evaluating each of the applications that have been reviewed per that priority list, and sorting them into a recommendation for approval, a recommendation for denial. And then, you know, there's probably going to be a group somewhere in between. We've been borrowing staff from PBS to assist them in developing those reports. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to report back at the next board meeting on those numbers. But as of right now, they're still compiling those reports.
Is this code enforcement plan taking resources away from processing permits?
No, it's actually adding resources to processing permits, because by adding two planners into an enforcement plan, the slide with the cannabis department also shows an environmental compliance consultant, which we would use both to help evaluate egregious environmental impacts that might be identified by other agencies, but also to help us process permits and manage the environmental compliance, compliance components of the permits or the applications we're processing. The two planners we would be adding would keep the four planners we currently have in the office more and out of the field, so to speak. We would be using them primarily for inspections, and then also to work with the additional administrative staff we're looking at for this program, to answer questions about how to come into compliance, how to get into a county permit perhaps. And then they could also pick up probably some backlog of initial checklist as applications do come in. So this would actually pad our ability to process while also providing us a compliance and enforcement arm.
I move the recommended action.
If I may through the Chair, Nash Gonzalez, just for clarification, no staff from cannabis unit would be pulled into enforcement. In fact, what we presented today is actually to add staff, to add the resources. So what we are seeking here today is your direction to move forward with the implementation of the model that's been proposed. And then we can then come back with a cost analysis for the board's consideration. And again, we'd like to be able to do that, so that can be at least considered in the budget.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay.
I already, I already did.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, so moved by Supervisor Williams, seconded by Supervisor Hashak. And we've had public comment. Okay, can we have a roll call?
Supervisor Mahorn?
Yes.
Supervisor Hashak?
Yes.
Chair Jurety?
Yes.
Supervisor Williams? And Supervisor McGordy?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, well, thank you. And we look forward to the follow-up vegetarian details. Two of our supervisors, Supervisors, I think McGordy and, oh, Supervisor Hashak, go ahead.
Thank you Chair Jurety. I just wanted to know what the timeline would be for bringing back those financials.
I think they're bringing them back as part of the budget discussions, but how soon will it get back to us?
If I may through the Chair, this is something that we will be working with the executive office, but we're anticipating bringing this back as part of the budget process.
Thank you.
Okay, there is a special LAFCO meeting today at 3 o'clock. Supervisors McGordy and Mahorn have that meeting later today. And so we wish you well there. Supervisor Williams, you have a comment?
Yeah, did we, was there a question from this morning about 4A, staff was going to come back?
Okay, was that not addressed earlier? Okay.
It was addressed, it was addressed earlier, and I believe we...
Okay, all right. Well, wish you well on your LAFCO meeting this afternoon. And with that, we are adjourned at 1:48. Thank you, everyone.